Okay, welcome everybody to the Monday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting City Council. Uh, welcome to Happy New Year to everyone, two thousand twenty-two. Um, so in pursuant of government code section five four nine E. Members of Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream, the City Council livestream, or at HTTPS colon backslash backslash BIT dot L Y backslash daily city J A N one zero livestream, or on your local channel, channel twenty-seven. Okay. So, uh, Ms. City Clerk getting called to order, a pledge of the flag like that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, to the republic of the stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Ms. D Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
I'm Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, City Clerk. Uh, moving on to the approval minutes from the special meeting and regular meeting in December thirteen, two thousand twenty-one, are there any? Um, edits or additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, um, for consent agenda, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Um, are there other, um, items that want to be discussed or pulled?
Motion for approval.
Second.
And you have all those in favor, say aye.
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 Great. Okay, so, uh, so we have a, so open up, um, the public hearing. General Plan Amendment GPA dash zero four dash twenty-one dash zero one four nine nine eight. The Plan Development PD dash zero four dash two one dash zero one four nine nine seven, the Design Review. DR dash zero four dash twenty-one dash zero one five zero 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 and Major Subdivision Sub dash four dash twenty-one dash zero one four nine nine nine. I'll hand it over to Ms. Carmelisa Morales Lopez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Or yes, we can.
Great. Um, so I'll be presenting on the preliminary plan review for the Ceramonti Delray Campus redevelopment, which is at six nine nine Ceramonti Boulevard. Um, this has been before the City Council a few times last year. Um, so I'll, I'll talk about the ongoing timeline later in the presentation, but, um, I'll start with, um, some background on the project. Um, so this is a map of, of Daily City, and you can see where the project site is located. Um, it's right next to, um, Highway one oh one or Highway one and, um, I two eighty. Um, this is a map of the project site and the surrounding uses. Um, it's bounded by Ceramonti Boulevard and Callan Boulevard. Um, there's a mix of uses surrounding the site, um, for residential to school and, um, neighboring hospital. Um, the existing conditions of the site, um, there's some slopes to the west and east of the site. Um, the main Jefferson Union High School District Administration Building is located at the site. Um, there's construction activity for the faculty and staff housing project currently, um, as I said, under construction. Um, there is a, um, school garden to the, um, southwestern portion of the site, and, um, surrounding it is, um, some temporary buildings and parking lots that are associated with the, the district building. Uh, just some background on the, the zoning for this, um, the site, um, there was a Plan Development, um, PD thirty-one that was approved in nineteen eighty-five. Um, for the specific campus area, it would have permitted a hundred seventy-five residential units and seven hundred thousand square feet of office. Um, in two thousand twenty, um, the council approved, um, an amendment to this plan development, um, which allowed for the construction of the faculty and staff housing project, which is currently under construction. Um, and this shows where the, the current, um, zoning areas are. Um, you can see PD thirty-one A on the top left. Um, and then PD thirty-one, which is the remaining, um, area of the PD thirty-one, um, precise plan area, um, which will not change. Um, the project site is within the red, uh, boundary. Um, as for the project that is being proposed, it would be a new precise plan to allow for the redevelopment of the campus. Um, there would be up to, um, one thousand two hundred thirty-five units, both affordable and market rate housing. Um, that would be permitted, uh, up to fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space. Um, a new head start childcare facility, which is an existing tenant of the site. Um, and there'd be seven development parcels and some street parcels that would be a part of a, a major subdivision. And you can see that parcel subdivision on this map. Um, as for the parcel development plan, um, there is a, uh, full development proposal for parcel B. Um, and that, and briefly, that includes a two-hundred-unit mixed-use building with eight thousand square feet of retail space, um, a parking garage that would be accessible for both residents and, um, the public. And, um, there will also be a park called Overlook Park, a playground, and anticipated community garden. Um, the subsequent parcel development would require designer approval, approval, um, by Design Review Committee. Um, and here is a, uh, drawing of the proposed build-out plan. Um, the district anticipates the build-out will take approximately ten years, but up to fifteen years. Um, they do anticipate that it will be developed parcel by parcel. Um, and the precise plan is basically developed or being proposed, um, as guidance for development, for development review, um, for both developers and for, for the city through their approval process. Um, and the next couple of slides, I'll go over the proposed phasing plan. So as you can see here, within the yellow, um, rectangle, that's phase one. So that includes parcel A, parcel B, the associated street parcels, as well as overlook park to the, um, the east. Um, phase two will include parcel D and C and East Drive, um, as well as any associated utilities. Um, parcel C includes the proposed affordable housing building, as well as head start facility. Um, and phase three will be the build-out of the rest of the site, um, which includes parcel E and F, West Drive and Central Green, which is, um, at, at the, at the middle of the, yeah, project site. Um, and this table shows the proposed development program. Um, you can see where all of the units are being allocated, um, and where the commercial space, um, is being allocated towards their summit parcel B, and then potential for there to be commercial space and parcels D through F. Um, I will note the, the two asterisks under, uh, for parcel D through F, that's where they anticipate high-rise building potential. Um, that would be up to fourteen stories. Um, I believe only two of the three parcels, um, will, will be anticipated, or will anticipate to be, um, high-rise buildings. Oh, and I would also like to note that, um, the precise plan does anticipate this proposed build-out plan, but there are also other various residential and commercial uses that could be proposed if, um, it's not built according to plan. Um, as for the access, circulation, and parking, um, components of this project, as you can see here, this is how, um, vehicles would enter and exit the site, um, from the north and east, or north and south, um, from Entry Drive and then from Campus Drive. Um, they are proposing a, uh, one point five and one point seven space per unit, um, residential parking ratio, and then a five space per one thousand square feet, um, commercial slash retail, um, parking ratio. Um, any diversion from these, um, parameters would require a parking analysis. Um, and planning, or ECD and, um, public works slash engineering are currently reviewing the parking and circulation plans, as well as the, um, transportation impact assessment. Um, the, uh, the district also, um, submitted two, uh, office market and fiscal impact studies, which are included as attachments H and I in the staff report, um, and the findings are, are summarized in this slide. Um, so basically, they found that the site is not competitive for office development, and that's been exacerbated, um, with COVID. Um, they're hoping that the future revenue will go towards the district's operating budget, which would improve the quality of education in Daily City. Um, and their estimates, uh, they did estimate that, um, at full build-out, the net positive fiscal impact to Daily City would range from about eight hundred thousand to one point three million per year. Um, this show, slide shows the required project entitlements. Um, the first entitlement required would be a general plan amendment. Um, we would change the land use designation from residential high density, which is the faculty and staff housing, um, site. And then the remainder of the campus, which is commercial office to commercial mixed use, which would allow for there is residential and commercial uses, um, proposed in the precise plan. Um, staff would also like to note that, um, in the upcoming housing element update, um, this project would indeed help, uh, the city, uh, reach that our residential housing need allocation. Um, it would provide approximately twenty-three percent of what is needed, um, and it would also contribute to the twenty-two, twenty-two, um, RHA goal. Uh, we are approximately at eighty-two percent, and I think this would help us, you know, get to one hundred percent. Um, number two would be the rezoning. Um, this project, uh, would rezone the current, um, project site, which is PD thirty-one and PD thirty-one A to a new plan development, um, which would increase on the amount of units permitted from one seventy-five to, uh, and add, um, uh, over one thousand units. Uh, the third entitlement required would be the subdivision to subdivide the, um, the property as planned, um, in the precise plan. Uh, number four would be Design Review Approval for Parcel B. Um, the other parcels would be required to go through a design review process as well in the future. And lastly, um, environmental review, um, there is an environmental impact report being prepared, um, and this would involve the certification of that. Um, and this slide, um, it's, it briefly discusses the, um, various meetings that have, um, happened since, um, the project was submitted. Um, so this was a couple of the committee meetings that have occurred, uh, between the council meetings, um, that were continued, um, last year. Um, and the next two slides, or next three slides, um, summarize the main topics that were discussed in the committee meetings. Um, a lot of it come from this, um, Q and A document that the district provided to the council, um, uh, which are also included as attachments in the staff report, as well as a zoning comparison that was provided by staff. Um, so one of the questions is regarding the garden, um, and you can see here, um, what, what impact it would, uh, have on the project if the garden were, was preserved.
Ms. Morales, can I take a quick pause real quick? I know that one of my colleagues would like, has a question or comment. And I would like to acknowledge that before we, um, proceed. Um, Councilmember Manalo, would you like to share your questions now, or?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate it, and thank you, uh, Carmelisa, for going over, um, this, this evening. I, I wanted to go back to, it was actually a couple of slides prior, in which, um, you mentioned the staff and teacher housing, um, uh, in the beginning. If we can.
Okay, just let me know when to stop.
Sure. It was, um, yeah, this was, um, right in the beginning, and you talk about the development program. Um, but we did already, um, pass this. This has already been, um, entitled. It's actually being built. So, um, is, isn't that correct, Ms. Carmelisa?
Uh, that's correct, and, uh, thank you for clarifying that. Um, in the precise plan, it does acknowledge it as existing units or, um, units that will be under construction, but in the overall development plan, um, it is included in the precise plan area, so that's why it's included on the table.
Okay, I just wanted, um, uh, that to be clarified for, uh, people or community members that are watching, um, that, that, that's not something forthcoming, that actually, us as a city council, we've already actually entitled the GUHSD faculty and staff housing, and it actually, uh, is, um, I think, um, timeline is spring of, uh, this year. And so just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carmelisa.
I had no problem. Thank you. So I'll just, uh, quickly get to that last slide. Okay. Um, so as I, as I was discussing, um, the main topics discussed in the committee meetings that occurred, um, prior to this meeting. Um, so we did touch on the, the garden, um, aspect of the project. Um, so the district did provide a response, um, and noted the various things that would have to occur for the garden to be preserved in the current location. So there will be, um, quite a few housing units that would be displaced if they were, um, to preserve the garden in the same location. Um, it would also require a redesign of the project, um, and possibly removing or relocating Central Green, which is the main, um, park, um, uh, at the center of the project site. Um, and increasing the building heights, um, could cause, uh, could make the project infeasible just because of the construction type, um, required for higher buildings and, um, the cost of construction. Um, as for, uh, a, a separate community garden that can be included in the precise plan, the district did, um, indicate they would be adding a community garden at Overlook Park, um, and that will be incorporated into the first phase of the project with parcel B. Um, and, um, in discussions, they didn't indicate they would be working with the community to, um, to design the garden and hopefully work towards, um, an alternative to the current, um, garden. And they can, of course, expand on that, um, during the Q and A of this, uh, hearing. Um, as for the green and open space, um, areas proposed there, as I mentioned, there is Central Green, there's Overlook Park, um, a number of pedestrian and bicycle trails, um, and other various open space areas proposed. Um, the district estimated approximately one point nine to two acres of publicly accessible parks and open space, and that's not, um, inclusive of the private open space areas for the residents. Um, as for the affordable housing plan, um, when will that be approved? That won't be approved during this, um, stage of the process. Um, since they are requesting, um, a different, a distribution of affordable units, um, that will be negotiated in the development agreement, which would be presented to the council during the precise plan review. Um, and there was also some questions regarding, uh, the difference between the current plan and, or the current, um, zoning and the proposed precise plan. Um, and this table notes a few of the, the main differences. So it's around the same type of, uh, uh, land uses, but the number of residential units, um, and commercial, um, space, um, significantly different. Um, the building height, um, is generally the same, um, depending on what area of the campus you're looking at. So, um, each of the precise plans go into, uh, which areas are, are able to have a higher building height versus the other. Um, and then, uh, in these last few slides, I did want to go over the, um, preliminary plan review process. Um, so just, we want to emphasize that, um, the Planning Commission has reviewed this project, um, in August, um, and they reviewed only the land use, circulation, and site design, as well as the fiscal impact of the project. Um, the Planning Commission's recommendation is now being forwarded to the City Council, um, and the council now has, um, the opportunity to either grant approval of the project or deny the project or done, um, approve the project with conditions. Um, and we, staff did want to emphasize that this, this action does not limit the council's ability to approve or deny the precise plan. Um, so, uh, on this slide, you can see what, what occurs after, um, depending on what, um, action the council takes tonight. Um, of course, if, if the, the preliminary plan is denied, the applicant cannot move, cannot move forward with the project as proposed. Um, but if they do approve the project, um, or conditionally approve the project, um, the applicant is able to move forward and finalize the precise plan, which includes, um, finalizing the environmental document, um, finalizing the affordable housing plan, and then presenting that, that to the council for the, uh, the final stage of the process. Um, in conclusion, staff, um, does recommend that the City Council take the following action, which is to approve the preliminary plan for the proposed plan development. Um, I'm available to answer any questions. Um, I do believe the district would like to make a brief presentation after mine. Thank you.
Hey, should I go now? Oh, they have it.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Morales. Let, uh, Kleem, if you'd like to go ahead, yes.
Okay, great. Good, I saw that, that her presentation was up there. Um, can I share my screen? Hi, can everyone?
All right, hello, hello, um, Mayor and, and esteemed council members. Um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to just share a few, just a handful of slides about what we're proposing to do. Um, as, as, as both, um, Ms. Morales had, uh, had discussed, and as we're about to share again, what this project will do, it will fund the district and improve staff salaries, help fund student programs, help retain staff, um, and of course, support the city with, uh, helping with the city's housing need and provide affordable housing and create a family-friendly neighborhood space. So again, so today, with the, you know, if, if the council were to approve the preliminary plan this evening, we will allow us, specifically with regards to the affordable housing piece, to be able to actually solicit a nonprofit affordable housing development partner, and we can certainly then explore what, uh, what are the feasible affordable housing opportunities that we would have as a district. So this really opens up, continues the process, and keeps us moving forward to be able, for us to be able to achieve the goals, and I think, um, we've heard from council in previous meetings. Next slide. And of course, um, with regards to funding the district, um, we'll see a slide coming up about some of the staff and salary disparities between us and another district. But this will help us to, uh, fund, um, and hopefully increase salaries. It will help, help us retain staff. It, it allows us to add additional funding for site and student programs, and the, the most important piece, we can do this because we will have an ongoing revenue stream, an annuity income stream, um, in, in perpetuity, uh, and that is locally controlled. All right, next slide.
So, um, the project also supports Daily City, as was mentioned earlier. It provides, um, twelve hundred units of much-needed housing. You know, I can attest to that in my search for housing here in Daily City. Um, it provides one point eight acres, as Andy talked about, of deed-restricted land for affordable housing. The deed-restricted is something we really wanted to speak to because, um, this land would always be affordable housing. Um, one of the issues with dispersing the affordable housing throughout the, the development is that, uh, as we've seen previously, there are certain times loopholes that could be used where the housing doesn't stay affordable housing. We sometimes lose that control. If we deed-restrict the land of certain parcel land, it would ensure that it is always, um, affordable housing. If they use it for anything else, the land would return back to us. Um, as was mentioned in the presentation by the city, um, it's actually twenty-three percent. It helps, um, achieve twenty-three percent of your RINA goals. Uh, and then, um, the Ceramonti Delray project is, um, a really good location for housing because it opens up to the freeway. Uh, there's lots of public transportation, and again, if we build something of this nature through the ongoing, um, if we approve the repulse and ongoing conversations, uh, we could look, talk to Sam Trans about upping the public transportation around that area. Uh, there's grocery and retail shopping. Um, it's down the way from Ceramonti. It's just really an ideal location. Also, it is a, a secluded area in that we're not building next to a neighborhood, and we know how much pushback there is when you talk about going into other areas. Uh, this area, um, no one has actually said they are in the, the surrounding neighborhood that they don't want us to actually build housing. There's issues with saving the garden or other areas, but in terms of the build, there hasn't been a lot of, um, voices that speak out against it. And, um, it doubles the amount of green space on the property, uh, which I think is a really good point that we need to talk about, is that especially accessible green space, it would double it, and we are including the Head Start Childcare Program, which would be in the same area as, um, the affordable housing. So again, in talking about our need, if you look at a comparison between San Mateo Union High School District and Jefferson Union High School District, and this has really been amplified in COVID. I know, talking to you as City Council and retaining staff, I'm sure we're not alone in, uh, really struggling to retain our staff, especially essential workers through COVID. We had a problem retaining staff before this crisis, and now in the middle of this crisis is becoming, um, uh, we, we have teachers on the line and staff on the line that can speak to how this year has been one of the roughest years for them. And when there are jobs everywhere, I'm just really, really worried about our ability to fully staff school when we pay, uh, less than any other high school district in San Mateo County. And if you look at our starting salary versus the starting salary of San Mateo Union and where it tops out at, it, we're not even close. Our instructional aides, um, and paraprofessionals, when again, my son was in special education, it's not just the teachers we're talking about, it's all the support that goes into building a school community. The paraprofessional gap is even larger than our gap between our teachers, our, what our substitutes pay. And right now, subs are crucial because of how, uh, many people are catching COVID and are out sick. We were only able to, uh, right now, um, fill less than fifty percent of our subs slots, and that's because of the limited amount of subs that are available in San Mateo County. You're gonna go somewhere where you make more per day, depending on the assignment. And again, the per pupil amount, and if you look at per pupil, if we had, um, what, we were able to make the revenue that San Mateo Unified High School District were making, be well over twenty more million dollars a year, in just one year. Um, but we serve students that have higher needs and require more funding. On top of that, the amount of money that we have to spend to continually retrain staff, and this year in two thousand twenty-one, excuse me, last year in two thousand twenty-one, we again lost twenty-five percent of our staff. And so just the, the time and energy and funding that it costs to constantly have to rehire and retrain staff is another hit on our district. We are currently, um, doing a lot of support through COVID. I mean, the COVID testing sites are on our campuses. Our custodial staff and other facility staff have to maintain those sites. And so we're paying for that out of our own pocket. We're not being reimbursed for any of that stuff, and it's being really hard to retain our custodial staff. So I'm really worried, um, when we're talking about the Great Recession, whatever we're calling what's happening right now, for our ability to continue to fully staff all of our schools moving forward with the high cost of living, with the lack of housing. with the lack of housing, with the lack of our ability to pay our teachers livable wage so they can stay and work here, and with the higher amount of stress and workload that is being put on all of our staff through the pandemic. And I know we keep saying like, we're we're at the end. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and then the tunnel keeps getting longer. I don't know how long we're going to continue to be in this pandemic. I think we need to start planning long term, and it's hard for us to do that when we cannot retain our staff. We have, this is just a list of supporters. We were very blessed to get the support of State Senator Josh Becker, Assembly Member Kevin Mullen, County Supervisor David Canepa, our former Superintendent of Public Instruction, who's from Daly City, Tom Torlison, and then a host of other community based organizations, Bay Area Council, SAMCDA, Housing Leadership Council, BHA, our feeder district, Jefferson Elementary, Jefferson Council PTA. And then most importantly, our our employee union, AFT 1481, and the California Federation of Teachers. There has been a discussion in the community about how we can guarantee that the funding that comes from this will go to our staff. And I think that one of the ways that we know the trust that has been put into us by the union is that, you know, we they are going by what we have done previously. 65 to 70% of every dollar that comes into the district is spent on employee salary and benefits. That has been historic. We have we have done that moving on going in the past and will continue to do that moving forward. Money that has come from parcel taxes has gone to raises. We are the community has trusted us repeatedly by continuing to vote for parcel taxes because we are fiscally prudent. And we do do what we say we're going to do with the money. And that is why we have the trust of our teachers' union and the California Federation of Teachers. So we hope that we can also gain your faith and trust. We want to continue talking. We know there's things that need to still be worked out, and we're willing to do that. But we can't do that if the proposal isn't accepted so that we can complete the EIR, continue the discussion about affordable housing, and reach a amicable like just a mutual, where we're all feeling good about this development and what it can do for all of us. Today was a really rough day for me just because of how hard our district is getting hit by COVID and how many COVID positive cases we have. And the mental health issues that our students are going through, our families are going through, the the hunger and food issues. And our district is one of those pillars that hold the community up. And I want to continue to do that. And it is hard to do that if we don't have the staff. The staff is the district. Thank you.
Lima, and thank you, Andy, for your presentation. Right now, I'd like to open up to my colleagues if you have any questions or comments. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, before we continue on, I just wanted to make a note that the committee has met at various meetings pertaining to this project. And there's more crucial information that needs to be provided to council regarding the result of those meetings. And I find it hard pressed to take a vote on this matter unless that information is provided to the council. And unfortunately, it looks like for the committee to report out comes after this agenda item. So I just wanted to make that point clear as we move on. Thank you.
Do you count, member Sylvester? House member Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cormar Lisa Morales. Would you go back? Do you mind if I do that, Mayor? To the slide, one of the slides. Okay, thank you. Where it says about our vote and then also a quick question is, so to vote tonight would give them the ability to move forward. And it wouldn't not necessarily is just to say to give them the ability for entitlement, correct? So that they can go out and get a developer and move forward. Is that correct?
The approval tonight would just be for the preliminary plan, which is the site design, circulation, just the very basic and like land uses permitted and things like that. So the the next stage would be the finalized plan. So you're not approving, you're only approving like the general plan, if that makes sense. I'm sorry if that's.
Yeah, because Councilmember Sylvester is saying that there's more to know. But if it's, if you're saying the plan, you mean the plan as is, or because I don't know what they've suggested in the ad hoc committee. But if it's so. I'm just trying to figure out how to move this along here. So if if they have questions, which I don't know what their questions are, the things haven't really been decided. But you mean the precise plan, I'm sorry to ask you these questions. You mean the density of the housing or whatever the questions they have, affordability and all that? Have we voted for it? Or would it just be that I just want to make sure they they know that to support a development, right? And to give them the ability to have a commercial slash housing. Would that be it?
Yeah, so the UR, you would be allowing commercial and a commercial mixed uses onto onto this project site, the general site plan. So where the parcels are laid out, where parcel A through F will be laid out, where the the open space areas will be laid out. The affordable housing plan is not included in this approval. That's still under negotiations. That will be in the development agreement. I would also like to note that under, I forgot what specific attachments, but the staff reports from each of the committee meetings are included in the staff report. So I'm, we're also happy to answer any questions about what happened during the meeting as well.
Right, right. But you know, officially, they they don't report at the end. But but that would that would mean that all the buildings would stay the same inside of it. Because I don't, it seems like to me there's still questions about that. To give them the ability, say, if they get a developer, not saying it would, but if a developer or whoever they pick decides to have a little redesign or what have you, and then they meet with our ad hoc committee, right, in the future? Because I'm not on the ad hoc, but just saying, then that would give them the ability to change the buildings precise as they are now. If a developer decided to do that with the school district and the ad hoc committee and the council agree.
The design of the the buildings are won't be set in stone during this approval. You're not even reviewing parcel B, which is the the current development proposal associated with the project that will all be reviewed at the precise plan stage. So generally, the building mass, the the building height, the amount of units, the types of unit or the types of uses, the open space area where they're located, those are the the topics that will be reviewed during this stage. No, no design review at this time.
Okay, so it's just to make sure that to give both sides the ability, because whenever they're speaking of, I read part of the report, but it hadn't been officially read. But so I know that there's still some things to make sure that they to respect the council members that are on the ad hoc committee and to get what they need for the council to obtain what what they're asking for or whatever they want to negotiate. Don't want to lock them in. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll hold my rest of my questions until after. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Cormar Lisa.
Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Is there are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. Let's open up the the hearing and I'll throw it to Leilani.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number four, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Just gonna give it a few more seconds, Mayor. Okay, it looks like we have 40 hands raised and last called speaker will be TK. First speaker we have is Nick.
Hello. I'm a member of the community, former student alumni, high school teacher, and currently part of our GWA SD School Board of Trustees. I should also note that despite my constant advice in opposition, rest of the board trustees has been fast tracking a separate real estate development throughout the pandemic, which is slated to erase a high school site, community garden and public park, all without community input. The good news is it's not too late to change course. The current issue I question is this. There is a new controversial proposal to build luxury apartments which would effectively demolish Westmore Park as a package deal. This has been called the Cerro Monte del Rey Expansion Project. It is as wrong and misdirected as it sounds. The expansion would actually eliminate Cerro Monte del Rey altogether and replace it with 90% luxury market rate apartments that our predominantly low income community vendors cannot afford, a majority of which are people of color and immigrants in multi generational household. This is a project that seeks to privatize public lands by starting a real estate venture using school property that currently houses essential educational facilities and programs. It should be noted that Cerro Monte del Rey site is both currently home to Summit Shasta Public School, a public charter high school, and of course, was originally home to Cerro Monte High School, which opened in 1970, yet was shut down due to budget issues in 1981 in the aftermath of Prop 13's devastating impacts on low income communities and school districts. The district tried generating revenue by leasing away half of the site in 1985. That means that the land lease real estate revenue strategy had failed in less than 10 years. And in an economy less troubled by disparities and skyrocketing cost of living we're experiencing today, the loss to our district was devastating then as it is now. I would know, I was a high school freshman that year and had a lot of friends at both high schools. The lesson, our schools belong to our students and our community first, and our schools are not for sale. We cannot put a price on the future of public education. Fast tracking luxury real estate is a lost cause, race to the bottom. High income people do not need more options. That literally helps nobody. At this moment, is our primary duty to help our.
Your two minutes have been reached.
Here in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ethan.
Good evening, Mayor Dos Magual, Vice Mayor Prenaventura, and the members of the city council of the city of Daly City. My name is Ethan Mizzi, and I'm asking you all to do what's right for your city and the students and staff of the Jefferson Union High School District. You've all read your packets and listened to presentations about this development already. You know that all the NIMBYs are lying or at least being willfully ignorant about the facts. You know it doubles publicly available green space. You know there will be a new, better garden that will actually be accessible to people with mobility issues. You know that it's right near two existing Samtrans routes, et cetera, et cetera. I don't need to tell you this. This shouldn't have taken three meetings just to get to this point. This is just a preliminary plan. Think for a second, what is the alternative to voting for this plan? I suppose you can just show the Jefferson Union High School District that you've acted in bad faith for months and you don't actually care about them or the education they provide to the students of your city. Saying F you to one of your local school districts is not a good look. Oh, and what are you going to say when the Attorney General's Office inquires about your regrettably legal but definitely amoral decision? I really hope you don't put yourselves in that situation. A vote for this project is a vote for education and a vote against pastoralist NIMBY exclusion. People will remember what you choose tonight, and I hope you choose to side with the educators and not with the NIMBYs. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm John Baker, President of the South San Francisco Unified School District's Board of Trustees. As you know, our district covers most of Daly City south of Cerro Monte Boulevard. I am speaking tonight as an individual. But as a fellow elected official serving Daly City, I heartily agree with the argument that Daly City needs more green space, which is exactly why the obvious choice is to approve this preliminary plan for Cerro Monte del Rey and allow this to move forward. The many new acres of publicly accessible parkland, recreational trails, and a new community garden that are in this proposal would be a great boon for the young people of your city. What would also be a great boon for the young people of Daly City are the higher retention rates for the Jefferson Union High School District that these homes and the financing they provide will allow. For years experienced teachers have been moving south along the peninsula to districts with higher tax bases and therefore higher salaries. My own South San Francisco Unified School District, which has its own retention issues, is often poaching from the Jefferson Union High School District. So even though it's probably in my district's interest, as well as that of districts in San Mateo, Redwood City, et cetera, to have a new crop of trained and dispirited Jefferson teachers to hire, I love my colleagues to the north, and I love the children they serve because we're all in this together. So instead, I am asking that the council please help the students of Daly City add green space and approve these plans. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Victoria.
My name is Eden. I live in Daly City, and I'm a student at Jefferson High School. I'm speaking in support of the Cerro Monte del Rey project because education is so important. We students need to believe that our city council is doing everything they can to make sure that we have the best chance in life. Without good schools, many of us are facing an uncertain future. It's even for other people say that you should just raise taxes to pay for our schools. But why do that when you have a much better chance to get money for our schools other ways? I believe that giving our students the best possible school should be a huge priority for our whole community, maybe even the biggest priority. It's not good for anyone in Daly City when our students have to struggle to get an education because our schools are struggling, especially when so many of our students come from lower income homes and school is one of our safe havens. Along with all the stretches our family face, having schools be underfunded should not be one of them, especially when we have this amazing opportunity to do something about it while also creating much needed housing. Anyone who says that they support our students and teachers while they actively fight against the people who are working tirelessly to help us is lying. If you care about us, you should be working with our school district, not against them. I hope that you will hear the voices of our families when we ask you to support the Jefferson Union High School District's plans to create millions of dollars of revenue for our schools. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak up for myself and the other students.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ed.
Call me in support of your approval of the development. As I spoke last time, if it's not approved, we're going to be forced to go ask for money elsewhere. That's from the taxpayers. So I would, I just want to just encourage you to support that. And asking for another delay on a preliminary plan, I think, is irresponsible. And hopefully, you guys will approve tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Lynn. I live in Berkeley, but understand that the Bay Area as a whole has been facing a housing crisis that is only getting worse. I'm speaking in support of this plan. And while the details for affordable housing are not included in the preliminary plan, I do urge council members to keep this in mind and prioritize long term affordable housing units going forward. Building 1,200 plus units with only a minority of them being affordable to current residents of the area and teachers will not help to resolve the Bay Area housing crisis or to support education if teachers can still not afford to live where they teach. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Monica.
Hello, my name is Monica Casey, and I have been a Daly City educator since 1993. And I'm the current president of almost all of the classified and certificated staff, around 450 people. And I'm the current president of almost all of the classified and certificated staff, around four hundred and fifty people in the Jefferson Union High School District. You've heard from me many times, so I won't take too much of the time, but please pass this proposal. We are so stressed right now. This is just added to the stress, and again, this is a preliminary. Just let us go forward. We promise we're trying to do the best for our students, and we would like your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Berto.
Talk about the Hey. As a Daly City community member that attends the garden, I believe that we should save the garden because it's, it's, it's a place, it's very sacred and it's full of educational value. And, and it's a shame that, that the teachers aren't being paid a liv- a livable wage to I'm sorry, you guys, but yeah, I'm totally against this, and we should save the garden. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Nancy.
Hi there, Honorable Mayor and council members. Good evening. My name is Nancy Loxamana, and I'm a voter within this school district. My son went to all public district schools, K to twelve. I am speaking against the approval of the SDR program as proposed. I've only became involved ten days ago when I read the article in the San Jose Mercury News. I've listened to the two-to-three-hour last board meeting, so I would get educated. I want to be clear, there has been no communication with the district voters on this or the Westmore project. Not one city or taxpayer group or voter group or neighborhood was listed in that school district post. You probably can guess when we only hear from the district. Bonds and parcels, which we have passed, at least four in the past four elections. You asked us, we voted for it, we gave it to you. We have supported what the district has asked every time. Our twenty eighteen Bond Measure J was for eighty low-cost rental units for teachers. It was not for eleven hundred to twelve hundred market-rich apartments, and not meant as bait for pay raises to the teachers with ambiguous statements like even tonight, improve, retain, hopefully. According to the lingo in the bond, it says no proceeds from the bond shall be used for teacher administrative salaries or operating expenses. The crazy thing is, if you put it on a bond or a parcel, we would vote for it, but no, you've gone behind our back. Demolition of a hundred native and fruit trees on the perimeter of this project is unacceptable. Please save the garden, rethink the whole area, and get more concessions from this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Sabrina.
Hello, I'm Sabrina Brennan. The Sierra Club supports modifying the project to protect the community, public health, and diversity in Daly City. Please return the current preliminary plan back to the developer for changes that include preserving the community garden and orchard in its existing location. Please require thirty percent affordable housing in perpetuity. The precise plan segregates low-income residents. Isolating all low-income families in one building and the wealthy people in numerous additional buildings is unacceptable. Only ten percent affordable housing is included in the project. The precise plan increases gentrification and displacement by increasing area rental costs. Ninety percent of the units will attract families with six-figure incomes who statistically prefer driving and high-speed transit. The project does not offer a high-speed transit opportunity. The project increases air pollution in the middle of three freeways, one thirty-five and two eighty, and simultaneously decreases access to public green space, trees, and the garden. By building almost exclusively for wealthy, for the wealthy, the project gentrifies Daly City and reduces diversity. By raising rents, the project displaces low-income residents from the community. By increasing air pollution and removing pollution buffers like trees and the garden, the project negatively impacts the health of families. Please take these concerns seriously and protect your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kalisha.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kalisha Webster, and I'm a housing advocate for people with developmental and other disabilities with housing choices. I'm calling in support of the proposed redevelopment of the Cerro Monte del Rey campus, which will include up to a hundred and twenty units of much-needed affordable housing for the community. Housing choices serves Daly City residents with developmental and other disabilities by helping them define their own affordable apartments so they can live independently in integrated housing in their own communities. However, because most of our clients are dependent on SSI or work part-time in essential jobs with low wages, they are only able to qualify for housing with deeply affordable rents, which can be extremely difficult to find. I'm glad to see that the proposed project includes a large number of units which will fit the needs of the most vulnerable Daly City residents, including nearly seven hundred residents with ADD. Take for instance a client that I worked with who has been paying, who had been paying five hundred dollars per month in rent for nearly five years to live in an unfinished basement which was unfit for human habitation due to the rodents and other pest infestations she could not, because she could not afford to live anywhere else. She was fortunate enough to qualify for the Section Eight Emergency Voucher Program due to her disability and living conditions, after which we helped her move into her own one-bedroom apartment. Unfortunately, that program has been closed to new applicants since October twenty twenty, and other clients we serve in similar need of emergency housing have few safe options to avoid homelessness. The transit-oriented affordable housing being proposed at Cerro Monte del Rey brings people like my client the freedom to choose how and where they want to live and affirmatively furthers fair housing as required by the city's housing element. The inclusion of community retail, doubling the current green space, and a new community garden makes this a plan which will benefit all Daly City residents regardless of income. I urge you to approve the preliminary plan presented to you tonight so that this project may move forward with the development process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Joel.
Yes, thank you very much, members of the council. I'm calling in support of this project. I believe that we are living through an unprecedented housing crisis, and the solution to this is to build more housing. You know, any, you know, issues of this supposedly being luxury housing are frankly ridiculous, you know. If the, if people are not given housing here, they're simply going to go into housing in poorer areas and bid up the prices, which is going to cause the very displacement that everybody is so fearful of. Furthermore, I would like to ask, who exactly would benefit more from a, on this side, on either side of the boat? The thousand-plus people who will get housing, plus the members of the Jefferson Union High School District who will be able to see salary increases, or the few hundred people who visit the, who visit the garden, which incidentally the green space will be increased in the, in this project, who maybe visit the garden once or twice a month, if that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Dee.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm, my name is Deej Gold, and I'm talking, I'm urging you to not support this project at this time. I agree with Mr. Sylvester's point that you do not have the information that's necessary. There are no details still, despite months and months of us asking you questions, sending emails, you know, speaking at these meetings, and asking about how the low-income requirements of your inclusionary housing ordinance are being met by this project. In fact, your own staff report says they are not being met by this project. And it's made some suggestions as to how you might strengthen the requirements for this project. So you should not be moving forward to the point where you will now be asked to approve the specifics of Plot B, which include no lower-income units. The, the whole issue of meeting the requirements for creating more housing, it needs to be low-income housing. We need to use this public land that has been bought and sustained by the public for a public good. And certainly sustaining the school districts is important, and I think every city council person in the state of California should be marching on Sacramento and demanding that they fund our schools. But this is a roundabout way, it's counting on trickle-down economics, that somehow by, by making units for rich people and then renting them out, that somehow some little bit of money is going to end up in the school coffers to increase the payment. It doesn't seem like it's that much money. I think it is irresponsible for you to ignore the state's public, surplus public, surplus lands act, which requires that when a school district or somebody declares land to be surplus, it'll be used for certain purposes. It's irresponsible to ignore your own ordinance. I urge you to vote and to not, to deny this and establish new conditions for this project and save the garden. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Rayanne.
All right, good evening, Daly City City Council. My name is Ryan Modashemi, and I am providing public comment in fervent support of the approval of the staff recommendation that has been set before you tonight. I just wanted to thank trustees Salahuddin and Lee for your wonderful presentation, as well as city staff for your wonderful presentation. I really thought that it laid out the, the relevant and appropriate information that is needed for a site plan at this stage, as well as the dire need for the school district. I think we really need to keep this in mind. What should the school district be using their land and resources for, if not, to fund teacher pay so that the discrepancies between their, between teacher pay in J U H S D versus Smushda and other school districts in California, that pay gap is reduced? It's for the good of the students, public land for the good of the students, that's exactly how I would like to see public land be used. And I would also note that Daly City has a lack of green space, and you would be reducing the amount of total green space if you denied this proposal because the proposal involves and entails more green space than what exists on the site today. So if you want a win-win that allows you to expand green space, fund the school district, and also provide twelve hundred units of housing, reducing displacement pressures on other existing affordable units in Daly City, this is your chance. It's been three meetings. I've spent hours, my time, begging you to do this, begging you to approve housing and move the process forward. There are more steps to go. This isn't the last say, but please move it forward for the sake of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kelly.
Hi, my name is Kelly Fallon, and I'm a senior policy manager at the Bay Area Council, which is a regional public policy organization representing over three hundred and fifty members of the Bay Area business community. And I'm here in support of the proposed Cerro Monte del Rey development. It's well-known that the state is facing a severe housing shortage, which is causing an acute crisis in the Bay Area as pricing low-income communities and communities of color out of the region due to a lack of housing options. To combat this, every county and city must do their part to approve new housing across all levels of affordability. Daly City should be seen as leader in housing in the region, not as another locality opposing common sense development. The Cerro Monte del Rey development is an example of an unprecedented opportunity to build over twelve hundred new housing units, including an additional one hundred and twenty-three publicly available affordable housing units. The project will also bring economic and community development opportunities, as estimated to provide one point three million dollars in net positive fiscal impacts to Daly City, on top of meeting around a quarter of Daly City's six-cycle arena obligation. This project is unique in that it not only addresses our severe housing shortage by adding market rate and affordable units, but will also provide an opportunity to retain J U H S D's faculty and staff and provide new community garden and other green space. The site is an excellent candidate for dense mixed-use development to grow the supply of market rate and affordable housing, and has a clear example of sustainable and inclusive growth for future generations. I encourage you to support it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Alex.
Hello, Daly City City Council and staff. My name is Alex Melendez. I am a lead with Peninsula for Everyone. We are a grassroots organization that works to create more inclusive and, a more inclusive and sustainable peninsula by advocating for more homes, better transportation, and protecting renters. I'm also on the board for the Peninsula Young Democrats. I don't have much more to say. I have talked about my support of this proposal in quite a few different forums. You know, you've already heard that before. Everything else would pretty much just be a reiteration, the need for affordable housing, doubling the green space, a space for Head Start, the wide range of support from community members and organizations and students and unions and et cetera. In my former line of work in affordable housing, time is a heavy cost. It's not just money, it's all, it also directly translates to people, to gentrification, to displacement, to humans having to wait longer before they can find quality, stable, affordable housing. And I really think that needs to be brought more into the lens here, on top of the, you know, well highlighted benefits that it would bring the district and staff. So thank you very much for your time. Please approve, please move this forward, this proposal forward as recommended by staff.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Emily.
Sorry, can you guys hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for listening to my comments in support of the Cerro Monte del Rey project. I spoke at the last two meetings and mentioned that I am a transition specialist. In other words, special education teacher at J U H S D. I've worked at Cerro Monte del Rey since two thousand and seven. I'm going to be frank this evening, I am exhausted. People in our school community are exhausted. We are dealing with the Omicron surge right now, and it's a very stressful time. I just came from a day at Cerro Monte del Rey where it was freezing cold inside the building, and I didn't see the light of day until after four P M. For those who don't know, we do not have windows at Cerro Monte. As I've said before, it is not a suitable place for students or staff. I understand and respect that we are following a process here, but I am just very frustrated that we have to go to these lengths to fund education. As we know, there is a massive equity issue with the way education is funded at the state level, but to have to come to these meetings time and time again and plead with our own community to please let us fund our district in the manner that neighboring districts are able to and make it a better place for our students is really hard right now. I understand this proposal is a big deal for the community and folks have input to share, but we have been trying to find a solution to our challenges in the district for years. I want to share my deep appreciation to our board and district leadership. They know our students deserve better. We now have a solution. Please approve these plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Victoria.
Hello, my name is Victoria Becker. I'm speaking today as a member of Pacifica Social Justice. Pacifica is part of the Jefferson Union High School District, so I have an interest in what happens to public land. I speak tonight categorically against the Cerro Monte del Rey project for the following reason. It destroys an absolutely exquisite, huge community garden, as well as a Daly City Park, Westmore Park. The plan builds twelve hundred market-rate luxury units on the site of the community garden, the vast majority unaffordable for most people living in Daly City. Instead, it's making money for developers. The plan is being pushed by the right-wing, flawed Reagan-esque YIMBY ideology, which laughably thinks that if you build large amounts of fancy luxury apartments, somehow other housing will trickle down to poor people. Anyone with common sense knows this is patently false. Teachers are being hoodwinked and are being promised higher salaries. Nothing has been seen in writing, no information revealed about the teacher, what the teachers will actually get from this furious deal. It is time for this plan to be scrapped. Instead, build a very low-income housing preserving the extraordinarily beautiful garden. Lawmakers, city council, people, school board members, stop engaging in the war on people, war on poor people and people of color. Stop participating in displacement and gentrification and stop enriching developers. Instead, immediately go to Sacramento, demand funding for public education, demand public funding for public housing. Do your jobs now.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Jos.
I'm a Daly City community member and organizer that is in support of saving the garden in Westmore Park. I'm going to say some concerns of the community and some things the districts don't want you to know in question. First off, how's it easier or going to cost less to build a new garden but not keep the current one? That already gets no funding or support besides from the community. How is it increasing green space when you're building on top of actual natural green space? SDR is all concrete, what you'll be adding is more concrete. Also, the district has been telling kids that they can't go to the garden because it's not safe. We have documentation of many safety hazards at SDR outside of the garden that have been neglected for a while that the city should be stepping in to help with. Why are you leaving that on the district and community? There are huge potholes in the parking lot in front of the current preschool. The students have to either go through a maze or jaywalk and risk getting hit by a car to get to the bus stop. Trustees have said themselves that they didn't think it would get this far because, but it is because the community did not know until as of recent that the development would include demolishing the garden and Westmore Park. If it weren't for brave trustee and community efforts petition and push back, this would have just been fast-tracked in thousands of trees, thousands, that we desperately need in the densely populated community in the country and many animals and people would be displaced. But it makes sense, the district wants to hide the truth since they have already sold out. They have admitted themselves to doing this before and it is still paying them, like with Cerro Monte Ridge where people currently have eviction notices on their door. People can't even afford to live in Cerro Monte Ridge that were built for this same purpose. The reason they aren't saying anything supposedly, like Khalima said, is because they are looking for other places to live. We've talked to them. Let's follow the paper trail. Community has paid a tax to the district before. This project has been advised and developed by real estate developers and high-paying superintendents that are making like 200K and we have been told by students they have been harassing them. The superintendents have been harassing the students. Superintendent Presta had a reported pay of 147 plus benefits, but benefits which is now close to 200K. This is 168.7% higher than the average of school employees and 123% higher than the national average of government employees. This is something she did when she was in Brisbane and damn, already? That's crazy. Save the garden.
Thank you for your comment.
Save the garden.
Next we have our first call-in user. Please press star six to unmute.
Oh, okay, cool. I'm here. So, good evening, community members, Jos, Nick, all you leaders in the community. I'm the public and I, as well as others, are here to help, help the community of Daly City. We're quite befuddled as to why the project has actually proceeded this far. Project's actually absolute nonsense. So, the project proclaims it helps our students to progress their education, thus inferring as of today, January 10, 2022, we, the public and community, are failing our students. So, we find that to be absolute nonsense. Again, I don't hear any parents calling in saying, like, it's my education. And from prior hearing as well, I need to hear one single parent call in. So, I don't know what the little charade here is, but the building of unaffordable units in a community with a surplus of housing would be an absolute disaster. Disaster. I would estimate, well, we would actually estimate the vacancy rate to be 30 to 50%. I mean, it's going to be a clusterfuck again. Really, the only ones that are going to benefit are the developers and any officials taking a kickback. So, any incentive from the project. So, the project should be re-proposed. I mean, I think, in our opinion, we discussed it, we need a mental health clinic. We need a community center up there. We don't need this unaffordable housing. A mental health facility, I mean, obviously there's mental health staring at me right in the face right now as I'm speaking. So, these individuals need help with their mental stability as they've already been judged for the murder of a man. Obviously, there's eating disorders, there's racism, there's all kinds of just trash going on. I mean, this is a cluster of mental illness as well. So, build a community center and a mental health facility for the community. And those individuals I'm looking at now, they definitely need mental health.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Jack.
Hi there, Daly City Council members. Thank you so much for listening to my comments. My name is Jack Hav. I'm 23 years old and I'm a community organizer with Peninsula for All, a grassroots organization trying to make San Mateo County more inclusive. I'm calling to you as someone who went to an underfunded high school that was risking WASC decertification. And my senior year of high school, we had a 34% staff turnover rate because all the other high schools around us, I went to half of my high school, all the other high schools around us over the hill with their wealthy tech money would just poach all of our good teachers and it made the students feel worthless. And like, we didn't have enough money in the general fund to get textbooks for our US history classes that like had 9/11 in them and our expo markers never worked. Like, when people like, please do this for the students, like, please put the students first. It's just what I'm begging you to do. Please vote yes on this project. Also, I want to talk about the regional housing needs allocation. So, these are numbers that Sacramento has said, hey, Daly City, you need to build these in the next, what is it, six, eight years? Daly City needs to build 1,350 new residential units, of which 541 need to be above moderate income, meaning that we literally already need to build more housing and an option is being put in front of you to not only hit your RENA numbers and goals, which you're required to do, but also save the schools and put the teachers first. Moreover, this development creates more green space than it takes away. It plants more trees than it requires cutting down. This is just such an obvious yes and please vote yes on just the continuation of us moving forward with this project. Thank you so much for your time and have a lovely rest of your day.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Gladwin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Gladwin de Souza Conservation Chair at the local Sierra Club. Please ask for a revised preliminary plan. The subdivision map builds discrimination into the land use pattern against low-income persons. By gentrifying the site, the preliminary plan makes displacement worse and it segregates low-income residents in the land dedication at parcel C. At the nexus of three freeways, this project is designed to increase cancer from pollution patterns in Daly City and ignore SB 32. The fiscal analysis report and market study in the council packet points out that the site is neither transit accessible or capable of active placemaking due to its location away from BART or Caltrain stations or the city's top-of-the-hill commercial district. It asks for a $2 billion entitlement while returning a sorry 1.3 million annually that in no way compensates for the millions the project will cost the city in sewer, stormwater, road and lost open space impacts from this development. By bulldozing the food garden, this project cuts off the ability of green infrastructure to reduce pollution and mental health impacts in Daly City. Existing habitats will be lost and species displaced to a date uncertain at a time of species extinctions and horrendous climate change. This project teaches the wrong lesson to our youth about segregation, displacement, trickle-down housing, biodiversity and health. It promotes business as usual. Please ask that the map be redrawn to preserve the public food garden and trees for future generations. Please return the preliminary plan for a better, less polluting development that has distributed affordable housing concurrent with the phasing. Thank you, members of city council and mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Dana.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes. Good evening, Daly City Council. I would like you to approve the building project at Cerro Monte del Rey. Have you ever been up there to Cerro Monte del Rey? It's a dump. It's a shame that we call that the center of secondary education in Daly City. We have students inside who learn in squalor, stained carpets, rusted bathrooms, broken sinks, cold water, no windows. That garden is empty except for the people who never fail to water in the middle of a state drought and with water paid for by education. The garden isn't safe. You can't see your kids play or if anyone is around due to the thick foliage, which never feels safe as a woman trying to enjoy the outdoors. When I'm walking my dog, I wouldn't know if there were other animals there or not. It's clear you all want to be the politicians that brought affordable housing to our community and it's also clear that you will be those politicians at all costs. If you add more low-income housing to the top of that hill, you'll create a ghetto and bring Daly City down. You'll in fact create a greater strain on the community and education. You should advocate for living wages in Daly City so we can all afford the housing market. You should fund education so people move here for our good schools. This project brings jobs, funds schools, brings a public park, a community center, a preschool and affordable units. Daly City doesn't have to just be a cheap place to live. Enough with biased posturing, take a vote. Remember that we'll all vote too in the next election. And do me a favor, if you vote this one down, will you please pass rent control so I can afford to live and teach here? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Hiba.
Good evening, everyone. I am a Westmore alumni and I'm here not only as an active community member but as a representation of our students as well as future generations of students that are at risk of losing their green spaces. As a student, Westmore Park was my literal safe haven on a campus that isn't safe for students. Students that currently attend Westmore have confided in us that this park is important to them. Community members, families and students have told us that this garden is important to them. When you all ignore our students, our most underrepresented students, not the handpicked students you appoint to be trustees, they would actually tell you that our schools are not safe environments. We want action as a student-led organization that emerged from Westmore because there was no accountability for sexual assault on campus. You all create student organizers like at Westmore when you don't address their needs. With this development, you created, sorry, one second. Yeah, so, our students demand community spaces which are practically non-existent here. The school district acts like they care about our students then why are your students promoting a call to action as a result of the incumbent response to the rise of COVID cases in your school? Why are you not committed to dismantling the school prison pipeline? Why are you not calling for our council to defund the police and use that to fund your schools? If you actually valued and cared about the safety of your students, you would have been outraged when DCPD killed Roger Allen, a black man who was sitting in his car, especially since student at Thornton, when asked where they go after school, they answer the mall or the streets. Roger Allen is a clear example that the city is not safe for black and brown communities, especially our students. This is a clear example of the need for community spaces. Hold yourselves accountable and be committed to changing this, which this development does nothing to help. Lack of equitable pay and affordable housing and any systemic issue requires dismantling the systems that uphold them. Anything else is not an adequate enough response, just a perpetuator. I cannot fathom that our city implemented Project Green Space and even is considering to pursue this development. How is green space going to be doubled when both Westmore Park and the garden are going to be demolished and they are huge spaces? In a school district that lacks funding, how is a superintendent making over 200K? That is a salary of at least three to four teachers combined. The fact that you're all willing to sell off community spaces is literally the same as selling out your students. You should all be ashamed of yourself. Save the garden, save Westmore Park.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Glenn.
Hello. Hi, my name is Glenn Mercado. I reside and grew up in Daly City. I'm with For Daly City and Malayan Movement San Francisco. I find it extremely disheartening that we have some educators over here who would rather support such a reckless project than invest and also nurture a public resource that already serves the community with a space that fosters a healthy environment, the healthy environment for it and an appreciation for life in general. We all hit up these parks to be at ease. We immerse ourselves in nature and it has this profound effect on our mental health. I can't explain the science behind it, but that's a fact. We all recognize this, how we find ourselves taking it for granted, especially when dollar signs are shoved to our faces. But nah, this cycle needs to end because that's exactly what leads to senseless violence. The most marginalized among us get pushed further into desperation. Desperation leads into violence and then what? We're shocked when things get real and slap another Band-Aid solution on it? Why do we perpetuate this reactionary structure when it clearly hasn't helped for literally ever? I personally don't think it's a coincidence that this atrocious plan is being fast-tracked given that the wealthiest among us have used this trying time to serve their own interests at the expense of everyone else, including teachers who simply are trying to survive out here. Apparently, our lives aren't worthy of dignity, but hey, as long as we get to keep the rich happy, right? I mean, we typically don't even get any type of meaningful support from our so-called leaders, but let's keep demonizing those who struggle under their so-called leadership. This is also nightmarishly twisted. And I don't particularly care that this piece of land is supposedly owned. If it affects the whole community, then its members have the basic human right to have a say in what happens to it. And as a resident of so-called Daly City, which we all know is unceded or lonely territory, I'm telling you, this development ain't it. Only expand the greenery, renovate it, throw a community center on it. Just because I don't have a fully fleshed-out alternative to their proposed development doesn't mean one can't be collectively designed with the community and all the way from its beginning to its completion. Not after the fact. How can we advocate for community but not give its members a real platform to get involved?
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Clayton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members and city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Clayton Koo and I'm a lifelong resident of Daly City, as well as the neighborhood where this proposed Cerro Monte project, Cerro Monte del Rey project is being located. I've grown here my entire life. I grew up in this community and I know the great potential of this project and that's why I strongly support it. The Cerro Monte del Rey site being considered for you tonight is a highly underutilized site. Any Daly City resident, any community member who's ever driven by or been inside there would agree with me that there'd be so much more done with what it is right now. The project provides our community with so many benefits and I think it's hard not to look and see what the value they offer, such as a new community and neighborhood that is well-planned, well-thought-out and well-designed that takes into account the best city planning practices to create a walkable neighborhood that is easily accessible to public transit and major street corridors, more open green space and hiking trails in an already urbanized city, more affordable housing in one of the most expensive places to live in the country already, more retail stores that keeps local sales tax dollars in Daly City right where we live to fund our fire stations, our police, keep expanding our library hours, provide community social services and creates more jobs for residents in Daly City here. Ensures that, and also ensures that the high school district is able to fully fund our schools so that our students, teachers and community receive the high-quality education that our community truly deserves. I strongly urge the city council to approve the precise plans for the Cerro Monte del Rey project being presented to you tonight. It just makes no practical sense to reject this project today or any day. It would be such a loss of bringing to not allow this project to become a reality. Daly City has a win-win opportunity laying right before our very eyes tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Kelsey.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kelsey Baines. I'm with Peninsula for Everyone and I urge you to support taking a first step to move this important project forward as it will provide both needed revenue as well as housing. And I hope that you will do so without delay. We know that housing delayed is housing denied and given that we have a housing emergency, I'm grateful that the district put their employees first by building affordable housing for their workers first. And I hope that this fact demonstrates that the school district is engaging in good faith, trying to serve the community and serve the school district, rather than an attitude which seems to be that housing doesn't count because it's already done, which I think is sort of no-good deed going unpunished. I've also like already made many of my comments before. I've spoken twice already. But, so I'm going to say some different things. I want to challenge the idea that the market rate housing is luxury. What kind of rich people do you know who are renting apartments? Rich people in our community are buying single-family homes, which is the real luxury housing in our community. The market rate housing, this new market rate housing will serve working people. It'll be relatively high-income working people, but those people won't disappear if you deny these homes. They'll just outbid lower-income people and fuel displacement. And I want to correct a previous speaker who said that Yimbys believe in just building market rate housing. It'll meet the needs of everyone. It'll meet the needs of everyone. We support subsidized affordable housing and increasing funding to do so, and we support the affordable housing that is here. There is not an insignificant number of affordable homes. I don't know the exact number, but if it's 10%, it should be over 100, and we could probably get more. So I hope you will make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have our second call-in user. Please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, so the project is not good for anyone, including the community. The gardens need to be maintained. They need to be part of the community. It is cathartic for those individuals to work in the garden. The housing situation, there's plenty of housing, even near the Coma Barch Station, as well as the Daly City Barch Station. There is an abundance of apartments in Westlake. There is an abundance of apartments even in Park Resett, Lake Resett area. So I don't know where this shortage of housing is coming from. Who is making this myth up? But it's absolutely asinine. Go onto apartments.com, and you will find an abundance of housing. There is a large supply and a low demand. The vacancy rate for this project would be probably between 40% to 50%. This would be an absolute waste of money, waste of time. How would the school district make money if they do not receive the rents on these apartments? The only one who's making money would be the developer. The previous callers that called in are absolutely 100% right. Save the gardens. Help the community get more affordable housing in there. If 80% to 90% of these housing, of these apartments are unaffordable, it would be a disaster. So I don't know where you guys come up with these plans. The Planning Committee needs to go back, look into this, and help the community instead of helping themselves.
Your two minutes have been reached.
That is extremely selfish.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ken.
Hello, members of the Daly City City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer of the Housing Leadership Council, Sam and Taylor Garry. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve all the affordable homes. On behalf of HLC, I'm here tonight to express our support for the Cerro Monte del Rey proposal here in Daly City. The decision tonight is not about the affordable housing percentage, about whether or not the city should allow for the environmental review to move forward. If this proposal does so, the percentage of affordable homes will be determined by the eventual affordable housing developer with its plans for the 1.8-acre site. There are other sites that are smaller in our neighboring communities. For example, in the city of Redwood City, Eden Housing is planning on building 225 deeply affordable homes on one of these such smaller sets. We also won't know the percentage of homes until an affordable housing partner is selected and when they have a specific development that they are ready to move forward with. If you want a higher percentage of affordable homes, we completely support that. But please do not eliminate the dedicated site. It's how we can create the deeply affordable homes that we need. I'd like to close by saying that our communities strive when we have stable homes that allow us to live near our places of work. Our teachers are no different. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jackie.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jackie. I grew up on the San Francisco Peninsula. I've lived in Daly City, South City, San Bruno. I went to the schools in San Bruno and Millbrae. I played soccer for the AYSO, all in Daly City. I played at your schools, like Jefferson. I'm an educator now, one who's tried to get jobs in Daly City but has had to refuse them because of your housing situation. And I have to say, I'm absolutely in support of saving this garden and need to urge you all to vote no on this. This is a poorly laid-out plan. None of us who are in opposition to this plan are in opposition to great education and great pay. I would love that. I'm an educator myself. We just need it to be recognized that these problems are systemic issues. They don't come from, you know, a simple housing project, which isn't even an affordable housing project. You're going to be putting market-rate housing and surrounding it with businesses. As a lot of folks have already stated, you're cutting down thousands of trees in lieu of green space, which, when we look at how green space is calculated, can just be a simple patch of grass. Your police budget is about $42 million, so you could take $2 million from that and give it to the schools and still have like $40 million left for them. That's an easy one. And I just want to continue some of Jazz's points. Her name is Jazz, not Jaws, which all of you know because she's been on these every week. She wants to make sure that everybody knows that in 10 years, affordable housing will not affect the current population. We still no longer have it. We still don't have an EIR report, so we need that. The public hasn't been given the opportunity to vote on this.
Two minutes have been reached. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Javi.
Good evening, council. I'm commenting today in support of the teachers' unions and the teachers, and in support of this project, in support of approving a preliminary vote on this project. This project will double the amount of green space. You know, the so-called gardens, Westmore so-called park, to call them green space is really, really stretching the term. This project will create green space that is accessible to all. The current so-called garden is not ADA-accessible. So if we want to talk about public space and justice and accessibility, creating a new, larger ADA-accessible, truly community garden is in the interest of the public and creates more public space. Because right now, it's not public space if it's not accessible, period. No matter what you say, this is not, you know, this, it's not really public space. You can say whatever you want, but it's not public space. As somebody who has disabilities, I can tell you right now that it is an insult, a slap in the face to say that this is public space right now. I strongly support this project. I support the teachers' unions. I don't presume to know better than them. I show solidarity with the unions, and I urge you to approve this project in solidarity with the unions. RENA is coming. This is an amazing opportunity to fill your numbers without having to deal with... You know, if you don't approve this, the housing is going to come whether you like it or not. So this is a great opportunity, and I urge you to approve this preliminary vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Fern.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So I'm a student, a high school student from Oakland. I'm calling in because I understand that the housing shortage is a regional issue, and all parts of the Bay Area have to do their part. This is an excellent opportunity for Daly City to do yours. You know, first of all, I would like to say, we need all kinds of housing to solve this housing shortage. As someone whose family has looked around the Bay Area for housing but who do not apply for affordable housing, there is a housing shortage, both market-rate and affordable. And this project includes both. There are also other benefits to this project that have been stated by speakers before me, namely that green space is doubled and will be made accessible to people of all abilities. Also, as a high school student, I have to speak in favor of increased funding for the school district. It sounds like it is very underfunded, and any opportunity to bring more funding to the district should be jumped at, honestly. And it's kind of a no-brainer in my mind. So I just... I mean, the unions are in support of it as well. I just don't know what else to say. It's simply such a plain yes in my mind, and I hope you agree. I hope you push this forward. We need more housing. The school needs more funding. We need more green space, and this plan addresses all three of those. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Chaya.
Good evening. I'm Chaya Gordon. The community has raised numerous concerns at previous council meetings about the destruction of the existing garden, including hundreds of trees. To date, none of those concerns have been adequately addressed. The council has undertaken extremely inadequate outreach to hear opinions from a diverse range of community members. The current plan has a lack of low- and lower-income housing. It does not comply with the basic tenet of the California State Surplus Land Act, which was created to facilitate building more affordable homes on surplus local public land. The Daly City Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requires that affordable units are phased in at the same time as market-rate units. But the majority of the project's affordable units, 100, will be provided on Parcel C and would be constructed after construction of some 300 market-rate units on Parcels A and B. Also, the ordinance requires that affordable units are physically distributed equally throughout a development. Each phase would be required to include 10% affordable units. This requirement is not being met by the current plan. Affordable is not the same as lower, lower income. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance defines lower-income households as having incomes at or below 80% of the area median. For the precise plan, this would be 124 units, but that's the required minimum. I'd like to suggest that genuine concern about the lack of lower, lower-income housing in Daly City might mean that the council designate more than the required minimum. Also, there's nothing to bind the funds collected by the district to go to the teachers. Nothing in writing. These are just examples of how the plan is not in compliance with various state and local laws. I strongly urge you to vote no.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Helen.
Hello, I'm Helen Nicely, and I'd say good evening to you all, especially Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. I'm in the Coalition, the Pacific Leaf Coalition, and we're working the mission blue butterfly as our honorita here. The Daly City, and I urge you to say no, to vote no. The Daly City community garden is a beacon of hope for the local environment. For example, the mission blue butterfly is native, only to the San Francisco area, and it has been found in the Daly City community garden. The mission blue butterfly has been declared endangered by the US Federal Government and remains San Francisco's city's only endangered butterfly. As we all know, an established habitat of host plants is very important for the existence of species like the mission blue butterfly. A healthy ecosystem is not a perfect ideal we could create in six months. More indeed, if we don't protect habitats like the Daly City community gardens that have been cultivated carefully over many years, planting the right plant, we may miss out on crucial rain cycles that promote the mission blue butterfly. Covering up the ground disturbs the Christmas stage, which is invisible to us, but the mission blue waits underground to the ripe conditions to emerge at the best time. So I, please give hope a chance and vote against this plan.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Denny.
Good evening. My name is Denny Asness. I'm speaking as an educator and retired teacher and a union member. I well understand the needs of schools for more funding and for educator wage increases, but I am greatly concerned about the Cerro Monte del Rey project proposal and its potential destruction of the public garden space on the property. This proposal also doesn't conform with the city's own Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, nor with the State Surplus Land Act. It's also disturbing that low-income housing, not just affordable housing, isn't included or considered in the plan. New developments in Daly City need more than 10% low-income or even affordable units. Developers often don't meet promises they make, even about affordable housing, and then cities and the people living within them lose out on the deal. It's particularly wrong to fail to provide lower-income housing on some of the last remaining public land, which would call into question Daly City's commitment to creating and providing economically, racially, and socially diverse housing. As an educator committed to justice for not only educators and school staff, but for the communities they serve, I strongly disagree with the JUHSD choice to support and push the Cerro Monte del Rey project as it's written, and frankly, I'm shocked that the union is advocating for this. I urge the city council to deny the preliminary plan and insist on major changes to the precise plan by adding at least 30% low-income housing units and redesigning the proposal to allow the existing garden to stay and grow. I am not against building housing, but I am for building housing that is just and saves a community garden. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Andres. Andres, you're next to speak.
Sorry, I was muted. I'll make it really brief. Andres Mora here. I'm just calling in support of this project and to delay it as little as possible. I'm a young professional renting in Daly City, and I love it here. Would love to stay here, but the housing crisis makes it very difficult. And I would just honestly support as many units as possible, as also as part of a climate concern. The less housing we build, more sprawl, and miles and miles of road and development is needed elsewhere. That will take up a lot more green space than this project would. And then on top of that, this is a win-win considering that the developers seem, you know, open to having a lot of green space on this property. So thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Nico.
Hi, council members. My name is Nico Nagel. I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. I'll be quick. I don't think I have anything to say that hasn't already been said. But I certainly urge you to move the project forward this evening. It's a rare opportunity to be able to hit this percentage of RENA numbers all in one go. And, you know, as has been said by other folks, there's a reason for the urgency behind that housing. You know, no single project can deliver all that needs to be delivered in terms of housing or certainly community benefits. But this is a fairly massive package, and it would be a shame to delay it any further. And, you know, as for those who say this, you know, there are alternatives to funding the school district, 100% agreed. You know, I think it's certainly possible to achieve both our housing goals and advocate for better salaries for teachers at the same time. In fact, that's something we should all be doing together as a Bay Area. That's all I have tonight. Really appreciate you all taking the time. I urge you to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have TK.
Hi, good evening, honorable members of the city council. Also, thank you to JUHSD, the teacher unions, the educators, everyone that works in the schools here. We really appreciate the work that you do, especially under these very challenging situations. We get COVID, and we know you're in the middle of it, so thank you for that. I'm a Daly City... I'm a Daly City citizen, Tatum King. I was active in the Thornton Beach project in trying to find ways, alternate ways to avoid development out there. But I do, I do agree that development is appropriate in some circumstances. For this case though, I would urge you not to vote for it for several reasons. First, I am concerned about the community garden. You know, as a resident, I know we do have very little open green space here. And that's a challenge we know in our city. I'm also concerned about the height, especially for those units that would be, or for those houses that are kind of on the hill there. I think looking at the plan, they were likening, likening this to either the Seton Hospital or the Daly City development there. So these are pretty high, they're being proposed. I'm also concerned about the below market rate housing, you know, that's, this, a lot of people have already covered this. I have heard when I was over there at the garden that there was an issue where they were already reducing Ceramonte Ridge market rate, below market rate housing. So some folks are worried about losing their, their, their houses there or their apartments there. So that really needs to be nailed down, I think, for this development, especially because you're essentially privatizing public land, right? So it'd be great to have some sort of community center, library, something else, so that's going to serve the greater community at large. But that's, that's a big issue. And I'm also really concerned about tying this to teacher salaries. Our teachers are way under, underpaid. I get that. Maybe a bond issue or something else can do that. Cause I'm really concerned about creating these expectations for a project that's going to take years and years to come to fruition. So I would urge you not to support it. And also for the butterfly, I get that Mission Blue Butterfly.
Your two minutes have been reached.
Thank you for your time and appreciate the work that you all do.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we have 15 additional hands that have raised since last called speaker TK. Would you like to approve?
Approve them all the way up to Hayden. I think the speakers have stayed on for this long. Let's give them some time to speak as well.
Okay, great. We also had one member of the public having difficulty with the raised hand feature, so I will see if they're able to make comments.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Debbie.
Yes, hello. Mayor, city council, I thank you for giving me this opportunity. And I also thank the room of Tishaloni for allowing us to be on their land. I'm a washer descent at this time. And also I'm against the project because it holds too many flaws in it at the moment. And so I'm asking to delay the project until we are able to see the environmental report. And so that way we can see a better judgment at this time. The Jefferson Union's project here, how can we trust them at this time? Because there's too many things that are going on. We asked that the school has not brought any accountability or information to the community of the market rate, which concerns the high rises in the rent for the community for low income people. Also, the Jefferson School has been strong arming their schools and their public meetings. And so it allows us, who are native people, not able to be able to talk at their meetings and give our concerns of what's going on. And we're also getting a little tired of them belittling us in the media and also with the union at the same time. So we urge you at this time, as I speak for the Aloney elders, myself, and some of the communities who cannot get on it, on the computers and to think about what is the better picture here? They have not brought nothing here forward to show us that they are worthy of maintaining their accountability in accounting services and maintaining. As living at the Ceremonie Ridge before, I had to leave because there was no more of low income rousing there and the market of there was going to be raised to 4,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next we have Mel.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm actually under the wrong name. My name is Jeremy. I'd like to read an email I got earlier. And it was from Kelsey Beans, part of the EMB action. Opponents of the project are mobilizing to try and save a community garden in quotation marks, actually a school district instructional garden, despite the fact that the new development would include an actual community's garden and double the green space. I, I barely had the mental capacity, emotional capacity to join these meetings in months now. And I was on this list of recipients because as a community member, I wanted to try and learn about, for my community of affordable housing. And YMBism, NIMBYism is all neoliberal bullshit because there's all this fight for more, for more, for more. But how are we even recognizing the land that we already have? That, that's here. Where is the respect and regard for greenery, for life, for the people from here, for the Aloney that have been from here? It's our last green space and you're, you want to bulldoze it for more green space? Where is the logic in that? Where is the, where's the heart in that to bulldoze life that's already here? So let that be a message for community members listening on this call, that they do not care about life and the people who are from here, because they are using students in education and people with disabilities as scapegoats. There's some people from YMB Peninsula, everyone saying that it doesn't respect people with disabilities and that the housing is going to come for us whether we like it or not. What is that?
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Julie.
Yes, hi, my name is Julie Sterabin. And I think the bottom line in this is that public land should not be given away for private developers, for private profit, unless it's for low income housing that would be for the public good. Trickle down housing, like trickle down economics, has been proven not to work. It's, I don't know why people keep bringing it up. And putting in a few lawns and so-called green spaces and raised boxes for a community garden is not an alternative for an already established beautiful space filled with trees and plants and structures that are built for all people to enjoy. There's many reasons to not approve the project tonight. More information needs to be obtained, more guarantees need to be offered. There isn't even an EIR. There, there, the project doesn't meet enough of low income housing standards set by the state. And even though I totally agree that schools need more money, this project does not even guarantee that money will go to the teachers. If you, it will be much harder to make the important changes in this plan if you approve it tonight. So I'm hoping that you will ask the Jefferson High School District and their business partners to come up with a better, more appropriate plan before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Salem.
Hi, yeah, I'm Salem. I've spoken at a few of these meetings. I'm a little surprised that there have been half a dozen meetings or so, and we're still this early into the process. But I have a lot of friends who are teachers. What they're going through right now is crazy. I'm sure you've, you've heard about how difficult it is. I was just talking to my friend who said that six out of 15 students of hers came to class today because of Omicron. Teachers had a really difficult two years. This is a project the school district is taking on that will drastically help with their school district. It's really unfortunate that their school district doesn't have the funding that other school districts do. So I hope you support this. You know, the city is really not being asked to do anything, just not getting in the way. And I think if the city is not going to create a solution that helps with paying teachers the salary they deserve or with building affordable housing, I don't think it's really right for the city to be delaying and obstructing desperately needed project. This is an amazing project. It has housing across the income spectrum. It'll double the green space. It'll help fund the school district. I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Michael Barnes and I support this plan. The mission of the high school district is to educate children like my son who graduated from Shasta. The high school district has historically been underfunded. This project will increase the money available to educate future generations of high school students. However, any requirement to provide more affordable units than your inclusionary housing ordinance requires will take money away from education. Any decrease in market rate units will take money away from education. Please approve this plan so that the Jefferson Union High School District may provide the education that our children deserve. Thank you for your, this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Blue.
Hi, I'm concerned that market rate housing and even below market rate housing does not meet the true needs of a community. The term affordable housing is in, there are state laws about surplus property and low income housing requirements that are not being met in this precise plan. What is needed is low income housing and green space, not high rise development with empty promises. And yes, I do agree, the school district needs revenue, but this method of raising funds has failed in the past and it will fail again. It would be a shame to destroy the mature public garden space for another expensive apartment building. I don't see how this project can, that could take many years to complete and help teachers and the school district that is in a desperate financial situation today. So please find a better way and don't approve this precise plan. Thank you.
For your comments. Next we have Remy.
Hello, my name is Remy Tan. I live down in Pacifica. My daughter went to Shasta as well. And, you know, one of the issues that we saw, you know, not only in Shasta, but all across the district was the high turnover of teachers because they couldn't afford to live in the area. So, you know, I'm an architect. I support the project in general. It's, you know, about a quarter of the housing of the RENA needs, which is 4,800 units. But the problem is the affordability of this project is very low at only 10%. And, you know, if any of you guys look at the RENA, it requires almost a 44% affordability in, in Daly City. So there's a lot more that needs to be done on this project to increase the affordability. I've worked, you know, for, for-profit, nonprofit developers. And one of the issues is you can't mix a project. It doesn't pencil out. So this site plan has to be rethought so that we have more affordable housing parcels. They're standalone, they could get funding because they're 100% affordable project. And to pay for that, we probably have to increase the density and the amount of units on the market rate projects to make this whole thing pencil out. And, you know, we make the project bigger. It'll get, you know, Daly City closer to the RENA amounts, 4,800, which it's, it's a lot of units in a city that doesn't have much land. So I urge, you know, the council to, you know, move this project forward, but increase the amount of units on it and make sure that we have the 44% affordable and of which I would make sure that a good portion goes to affordable housing for the teachers in the Jefferson High School District. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Denton.
Hi, good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. In case, I'm a South City resident. And as a member of the community that's going to be affected by this project, I would like to urge you to approve it because the people that live in South City work elsewhere. You know, it's not everything in, in South City stays there. I think this would make a huge difference for middle-class families. I don't know if this has been brought up already. Maybe some people celebrate this, but California, for the first time in its history, lost population last year. That's direct result of middle-class families leaving the state, people my age trying to raise young families, looking for housing. I love the fact that some of these people claim to have sky-high vacancy rates. I've yet to see them. And a lot of people, you know, you talk about the diversity aspect. It's not just white people leaving the state. I mean, let's be honest here, rich white people are always going to be fine. But it's the people that can't afford to live here, a large percentage of which are people of color. It's, it's not, if we're talking about a diversity issue, building more housing locally helps increase diversity. And also I don't see how the other thing is, I don't see how people don't think of it as positive, that you be adding 1,200 residents. You talk about wanting to afford mental health. How about increasing the tax base of Daly City? I think that would be able to afford you the ability to do some of these things that other people have pointed out. Anyways, thank you for your time and I hope you go forward with this project.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Teresa.
Good evening, everyone. This is Teresa Prano. It's good to see everybody. I'm going to cut to the chase. As many of you know, this came across the planning commission desks. And I asked questions when I was, when this was in front of us. And since that day, it has not left my mind that this is not a good project for Daly City. Daly City does not need three 12-story buildings. Daly City does not need to put over 2,000 apartments in one spot. If, so number one, we can't allow the facts to be blurred here. Affordable housing, the garden, the wages, all that's important, but that's not this project. If more money is needed for teachers' wages, then the council, San Mateo County, the teachers need to get together and figure out what's going on. Okay, we don't need buildings this tall altogether. There's three of them, over 15, 10, 15 years. They're going to build 12-story buildings with over 2,000, 2,500, I believe, apartments in one little space. I don't care how much green space you think you're going to leave, but this is a legacy. And I can't, I can't see us doing this to our city. That is horrendous. Also, if we have issues with money, we need to deal with it. The, the buildings on Juniper Sarah, you go look at them. Seaton Medical Center is nine stories. The Genesis Building is seven stories. How can you compare that with 12 stories? This is ridiculous. We can't, you know, let's not lose sight of what's going on. We do not need to have a densely populated area full of people. How are they going to get around? Where's the public? Where's the parking? It is not good for Daly City and I'm urging you not to go with it.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Xavier.
Hello, hi, yeah. My name is Xavier Gomez. I'm a community member and I'd like to preface this by saying I am on the ancestral land of the present day Wac Maloney tribe. And I like to just kind of go on and say that I do, I do support the increase of housing and I do prefer dense housing. And if it's a nice one in the community, you know, oh, well. But I also want us here to, to talk about all this, all the specifics of this project and what you're approving today. Because what I'm looking at right now is nine faces on my Zoom screen that I've been looking at for two hours. Okay, so then why did the, why did the initial project proposal for the community include seven stakeholders? Why do I see, why do I see more people on my Zoom screen right now than the included stakeholders? Why did you need 3,000 people to sign a petition in your community to decide that, wait, maybe we should take a second look at this? Okay, yeah, maybe, maybe it's a lot that we're having three meetings right now. But I think three meetings is okay for a 12-story building that's going to last hundreds of years in our community. We're not answering or asking all the questions here. Yeah, it doubles the amount of green space. How many of our, how many people here in the Zoom meeting even understand the importance of the green space? It's just a figure to you guys. Come on. The, what is the carbon sequestration? The, what is the carbon sequestration of the green space? Is it grass? Because I don't care if you're doubling the amount of grass. Are you including native grasses, native flowers? When you're removing, you know, the intermittency in between removing this community garden and building the, the other one, how many of you went into that community garden and saw that it is the daily sustenance, the daily food for people in your town, for your constituents? Who is currently going to the community garden and eating? Who is getting their, their, their daily diet from there? Do you know? Do you know their names? Where are they going to go when the community garden is gone? Where are they going to eat? These are your community members. These are my uncles and aunts.
Your two minutes have been reached.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have WarDC.
None of this is the teacher district or community's fault. Think about how we are literally on a call begging public servants. We elected to give things that we all deserve. Well, actually, that the city council has elected because they move around their positions like musical chairs to moving around our tax dollars, avoiding accountability. We could be standing together because we are in this together, literally. There's teachers now talking against and bad about the garden now because they are struggling and we get that. But teacher shortage and lack of funding is really a public education crisis brought on by failed policy, rhetoric, and leadership. Also, just want to say I had some delicious banana passion fruit yesterday at the garden and we have so many things that we're going to plant so for the community to come and join and eat. So please, please save the garden and, you know, and if, if this, if this is voted yes on today, we're not going to be able to have all those things. Right now, we are also in a pandemic. Student, teachers, and the district are feeling unsafe even being in school because of COVID and there's also sexual assault. Crazy how health and wellness isn't the priority, but as all you say, housing is, right? Because all you city council members left to promote housing, housing. Mayor Milano, we haven't forgot, well, previous mayor, I'm sorry, there is brand new apartment sitting empty in Daly City. It's so clear we all can't afford to live at work here and building more apartments and in just ten years will not be affordable anymore because of inflation and just the fact that Daly City is only made up of shopping stores, car dealerships, and junk food. It's easy to predict where our community is headed. We don't need any more apartment buildings until we address the root causes of all this. I want to end with this. If you want to talk about mental health and how this could affect our most innate people, the garden is the most uplifting space. I and the community, we, we've talked to, have experienced in Daly City and I've lived here my whole life. We all need outdoor spaces, things outside of the systems we are forced into to survive, to literally live and thrive. If these a thousand trees are cut down, which according to Project Green Space, Daly City only has seven hundred, four hundred, fifteen, then we will only be contributing to our climate and health crisis. Trees are like insurance against the impact of climate change and pollutants. Without them, we will be completely exposed and we need our, our report. Vote no on this plan. Save the garden. Save Daly City.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Anna Leo.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Anna Ilodisho. I'm a member of Common Ground California, an organization focused on land use, housing, financing, strong public services, and infrastructure through land value taxes. First, I wanted to thank trustees Sala Houdin and Lee for detailing this project that I support. I've been following for several months and I actually hope this serves as a model for other Bay Area school districts. I went to Leland High School in Southern San Jose and that high school is also losing a lot of teachers because they can't afford to live in the same county. And an affordable housing project for those teachers was proposed in twenty eighteen but was denied and that story actually became featured in a YouTube video with millions of views showing how the Bay Area's housing crisis is failing its teachers and its students. I don't want Jefferson to be another example of that. This is an amazing project because it provides over a thousand units of housing, which to be clear, if those housing units are not built, that doesn't mean those one thousand potential families don't disappear into nothing. They just displace others in what little housing stock is available or you see sprawl, which actually deplaces, which actually cause much more devastation to wildlands. If you don't build housing, you cause displacement and you're primarily displacing those with low incomes who can't afford the higher rents. Someone mentioned how we should go to Sacramento and demand better public school districts. And while I do agree, last time I checked repealing Prop thirteen, it wasn't popular, but this is public land being used to provide revenue for public schools, their students, and their teachers. You get money from the land lease. And with this project, you're providing a revenue source of millions of dollars for the school. And without this project, you are worsening segregation, you are worsening displacement, and you're depriving students, teachers, and families. The opportunity to form stronger communities through well pun, through well-funded public services and the lack of providing any housing is going to cause devastation for our climate and the lack of housing is a public health failure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Joe. Joe, sorry, you're the next speaker.
You can actually pass on.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Tushio. Tushio, you're the next speaker. Tushio, if you're joining by phone, press star six to unmute. Okay, we'll move on to Hayden.
Hello, good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great. My name is Hayden. I'm a high school student and I just want to state my support for this project. You know, I've seen my teachers who have had to move away and I don't have them as teachers anymore. My teachers who have to commute from Tracy, from Stockton, Antioch every morning to come to school. And you know, the school facilities that are in disrepair, the books that are missing pages, the roof that's leaking, you know, and now with COVID, it's just so much, you know, we need more housing. We need better school facilities, more resources for our schools, more money for our teachers. And you know, this project is able to do all that, double the amount of green space, make it ADA accessible. So I just really want to voice my support for this project and the additional homes that it will bring to the community. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, there's one additional hand after last called speaker.
Take this last one and then we'll proceed.
Okay.
We just want to include that we are prepared to defend this land because it's not just property, it's land. That doesn't even belong to us. The land belongs to itself, but just to let y'all know, we are prepared to defend this land. So save the garden, save Westmore Park, which also is included in this proposed plan. Please be transparent and include that the district offices are being proposed to be built over Westmore Park because most Westmore students don't even know that. And that needs to be told, but please vote no today on this plan and let's get back as a community and do the right thing by everyone. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Now that public comments are over, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? No, seeing none. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up the discussion to my colleagues at this time. So if you'd like to have any questions, comments, please raise your hand. Vice Mayor Ray Bonator, followed by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask if I could maybe talk to the presenters, Andy, Lee, and Kalima Sala Houdin. Just want to make sure they're on if I could maybe see there. There you go. Thank you for coming back and appearing. So it has been no secret of mine that I'm very much interested in affordable housing and increasing when there's an opportunity to increase the numbers, the percentages beyond the ten percent that we are operating under. My question to you, Andy and also Kalima, is how do you address that concern? What would you like to offer a state for the record about what your plans are and how can you, whether or not you share the goal of getting to affordable housing that is more than ten percent, approaching twenty percent even? And so that's my first question. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bonator. I think I think we are at a place where, again, as we've noted in our presentation, upon approval of this preliminary plan, we'll be able to actually go and, and, and talk to a, you know, to various affordable housing developers to see what they can really do on that one point eight acre site. I think we, we know, we know that they could probably do something that maybe potentially higher than the ten percent, but we won't really know until we actually have a preliminary plan approved and we are able to actually speak to them and see what it is they did, they can do with the site because they're not going to want to commit until they know that this plan is moving forward.
I think too that people have asked for the EIR report. We want the EIR report too. That's what's needed to figure out the amount of affordable housing that can fit on the one point eight acres. I'm committed to building as much affordable housing as we can possibly build that doesn't fiscally impact the district. So I don't know what that amount is until we can finish the EIR report and pull, bring in an affordable housing developer. We welcome the city to be a part of those discussions with the affordable housing developer to hear what they have to say. If you don't like what they have to say, this is just an approval of the preliminary plan. When the affordable housing numbers come back to you and if they're insufficient, vote against the plan. But I don't want to stop working on it until I can get those concrete numbers to you. Let us figure out what those numbers can be. What's the potential? But we need to know the environment impact report. We need to finish the rest of the entitlement in order to get those hard numbers.
All right. Let me, let me turn to the issue of the community garden. So obviously there is a lot of concern for the displacement of that community garden. I've, you know, obviously I've listened to some of the concerns. I've heard people describe it as a magical place that is quite beautiful. And so my, my, my question is, what kind of outreach did you do? What kind of steps did you make to try to preserve as much of this garden as possible? And how did you come to the conclusion that it's just not feasible?
So I can speak to that. So we met with Debbie Santiago on numerous occasions for over a year. We have held, I know we've had school board meetings where people have come and spoke out in favor of the garden. People are saying that they don't have access to our school board meetings. We have been as open and transparent as any other municipality. You can watch our meetings on YouTube. You can see that speakers have come out and spoken and said their piece to us about the garden. The facts are these. We created the garden, right? The instructional garden, it started as an instructional garden for our special education students, our adult special education students at the Ceremony Del Ridge School Site. We created the garden. To say that we can't do that again, I don't understand that. I mean, it's, we developed the original garden. We are saying we want to do it again in another area. People are pushing back against the imagery of what we presented as the boxes. That was just so people get an idea. We're open to talking to the community about programming the green space. Our superintendent and trustee Lee went to Shasta, for example, and talked to the students there about their ideas. We hear that because when we heard people want a community garden, we wanted to build an actual community garden. The picture that we showed is what community gardens usually look like where they're regulated. We know people are assigned plots. It's still free, but they're assigned plots. So there's some sort of management and we know like who belongs where and there's just an understanding of how do people know which plot is which, who's growing what? People are just planting stuff willy nilly and gardeners. There's no oversight. So how does, how do you maintain something where there's no one that's doing oversight or managing the property? The district isn't in a position to be able to do that as we talked about, or we have a funding issue. We don't have the staff to do that. So we're trying to bring in something that is manageable, that is accessible to the community at large and is still a garden. If it is not something with assigned plots, we can bring in something else. But we're trying to bring in something that is responsive to the community needs, but also allows the district to generate revenue.
Yeah, the other piece, just on, just on, just on that again with the green space. We, again, when you looked at the preliminary plan, that is, we've identified areas like that central green and where the community garden, where the new community garden is located, those are really just placeholders. This is the opportunity that we have going forward to be able to, to, to work with the community to see what they truly want and how to program those spaces most effectively. I hope that helps answer your question, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot, as I made mention before, a lot and plenty of information that transpired as a result of our last meeting on this project. I would strongly urge that we bifurcate this momentarily and move on to committee reports and I can place out all the information before we take a vote. I'm willing to put out there that if we were to take a vote on this matter, I will be a no vote unless I am able to provide all the information that transpired at our, our meeting regarding this project. So, you know, I can go on and keep talking, but unless I want to follow protocol and procedure here, I think once again, that committee needs to report out before we can actually take a vote on this subject. I think it'll be too premature at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Is there a possibility for that to happen? If somebody can help me understand the process of moving the council committee reports to this section so that we have all the information ahead of us?
If I may, through the mayor, you can provide your committee reports before the vote so that you would have all the information that you need.
Go ahead and lay the, and let's, let's. Go ahead and um place the, and let's, let's go through the, um, I know we had some hands up first. So I know Councilmember uh Di Giovanni, you had your hands up and then Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, if you have any questions and then if we can uh move up the council agenda, um council committee um report to this section.
Mr. Mayor, it was uh Councilmember Manalo. She had her hand up before.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No problem. Councilmember Manalo.
It's okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I have a follow-up question in regards to what the Vice Mayor Benaventura asked. And I think Andy, you mentioned that um what you have for the open spaces or um at hand on the plan are placeholders. That's kind of the, the first time I've, I've heard that. And so when you mentioned there are placeholders, could you elaborate a bit on that? Thank you.
Well, right now we have, if you look at the, at the preliminary plant, site plan now, you would see the central green space, which, you know, was the assumption at the moment would be just sort of an open, open lawn, perhaps something of that nature. And and you look at the side of the community garden, which is in the northeast corner of the site behind parcel B. And and as trustee Salvin uh mentioned, it, we just have imagery of what a standard community garden looks like. Again, I think just because that's there, what we're saying is that that is land that is dedicated to, to, to having true green space. Now, we could program it differently. Perhaps the community says, hey, we do want a, you know, a grove of trees in that central green in addition to maybe some lawn space. Maybe, maybe, I think there was a commenter who said we, maybe if there were some, some native grasses there. That sort of thing is the type of feedback we want to be able to hear uh in terms of the programming for that green space. So we're not locked into a specific look right now. We are, what we want to do is really say, this is what's available in terms of the open green space. And and community, please tell us how you would like to see that programmed.
Exactly. I think the imagery in our presentation is throwing people off a bit in that they just see a big green square and they think it's just going to be open grass. We just made it green to, to symbolize green space, that we want it to be open green space, but not specify exactly what that is. So we're, we're open to getting feedback on what, what do you want there? How do you want it programmed? We heard we want a community garden, so we found it for the, for the other park, we found images of a community garden. Doesn't have to look like that. Tell us what you want it to look like and we can program it that way. That's, that's our goal. That's what we would like to do.
Thank you. I think that um, you know, what was uh mentioned earlier that the um open space or the, the garden where it stands today isn't um necessarily what is um visualized in, in your renderings. And so what I'm hearing from you is that, that it's, that's not necessarily what is envisioned and you're willing to work with community in order to um create something uh forthcoming that is um, I mean, I think that's, that's the difference. When you look at what is there now versus what you have visualized, it's, it's not the same um type of garden that is in, in, in the place right now, right? And so um I think um is, is there uh an opportunity for you to work with community members that are um, you know, tending to the garden um now? And so I think that's also uh another question.
We're willing to work with anybody that wants to work with us and wants to talk to us and is interested in the, the reprogramming of the new land. Absolutely. Um, but you know, I understand that I'm asking for people to let go of the other garden. I understand that sacrifice, I, I've been listening to all the public comments. But I'm also knowing that as a school district, it has to, we, there's no way for us to maintain that. It continues to be expanded. It continues to be grown upon. People who are not um don't have the training to do landscaping or build or digging into these hillside. It's causing erosion. They're clogging the drainage with all the rain. They're building structures without any permitting or are asking the district. There's locked facilities on there that the district doesn't have access to, and we still have students on that site. And it's still of, it's still operating as a school. So I don't know if we can recreate this thing because it's not, right now it's operating in a way that's not feasible and not liability safe. It's not, it's not a, it's functioning as a liability. There's no way we can get insurance for it. So I want to build a new garden that's actually something that can be sustained, that can be maintained, that can move forward in perpetuity and has um some sort of maintenance structure and built in place so that it stays on and is not reliant on people who can, you know, on the transient nation of people, people moving in, people out. A lot of people said, I used to live here and, or I moved in here. We need some, somebody that's can sustain that garden. That is not the district. We are not able to sustain what is being grown into almost a park. We, this is a, we built a school garden and it's being expanded into something that is not something that the district sustains. So what is being held right now is not anything that can move on and, and into the future. We want to build something that is sustainable and can be maintained moving forward. And I'm, we're willing to talk to anybody to help us do that if they're willing to work with us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, let's see. I think Councilmember Benaventura touched on it about the affordable housing. So what I wanted to understand, because I wasn't part of the, any of the ad hoc committees, is that the approval tonight does not have anything to do with affordable housing. And the idea is to approve the plan, then you go out to a developer, get an affordable housing developer, but you want to make the affordable housing a part of a different plan, a different phase in one building. Is that correct? In a separate, like a separate, like a, a separate building. It's almost like a separate plan.
So again, one of the things that has been brought up as a criticism of the district is that when we did this previously, those, the affordable housing units did not stay affordable. There's no way that for us to guarantee in building the affordable housing units in the way the ordinance states. It's hard for us because it's, it's also a city responsibility to watch those units. And the city has said that it's also hard to watch those units to uh track what the develop, with, with the uh property owners are doing with those units. We can ensure that if we build on the 1.8 acres that's set aside, that can only be affordable housing in perpetuity. That is the only thing it's going to be used for. The other thing is that building a single unit affordable housing is the way that the vast majority of affordable housing is built in California now. It's easier to fund because you're funding one unit. Um, as you know, because you've, the dis- Daily City has a standalone affordable housing unit that's, I believe, on mission. That is the way it was funded. It was built as a sole unit so that you could go for county and state funding and made it much easier. So that's what we want to do. We want to continue these discussions with the city and staff so that we can explore not only how much housing we, that we can fit on the 1.8 acres, but find a way to pay for it so that we can build as much as possible. We can't do that if the proposal is stopped here. We want to continue having those discussions. We want to continue having those talks that we've been holding with um Councilmember Manalo and Councilmember Sylvester in the affordable housing. We want to keep talking about it. Affordable housing is important to us as school district trustees as well.
So given that, that I get the, the concept about the mission on Mission Street, but with the other buildings being market rate, I, when I read the, I'm part of the council ad hoc committee. I think their concern was something about making sure that they weren't in one building. But I'll, I'll wait to hear from their, their report as well. And the other quick question is, well, on a personal thing, I'm just saying, dire straits, definitely teachers need housing. How long, what can be done because the emergency is now, right? For these teachers and staff, I get, because you're like bleeding, excuse my terminology, bleeding stuff, staff and teachers, right? And the school district is hurting so bad. And I know that probably need to be agendized or whatever, but it's pretty heartbreaking to hear that when I know that this, all this takes time, right? And then for me, I'm like, well, I'm sure that that weighs on all of you as well. But um, that that's not going to happen overnight, right? So even, even before, it's just not going to happen and the need is like now, like immediate now, right? So that's weighs heavy, weighs heavy. That weighs really heavy because even you have to wait, you have to build, you have to approve. So it's still going down the line. I get the long-term effects, but we're, you're bleeding now, right? And COVID has really exacerbated it and people are struggling and it's just, I see how heavy it is for, for you and everyone. I totally do. The only other quick question is I think that I wrote down something about, um, forgive me. I know that we're not going to get any of the EIR until everything moves forward and I'll wait for the ad hoc to report out. They may be able to give more details on their, their thing and what they want. And if it was approved, uh Carmelisa um putting conditions in it, does that make any difference? I haven't heard the ad hoc committee yet.
Uh, Councilmember uh Di Giovanni, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, so if the council, my colleagues or whoever, and then if it's approved, they're allowed to put conditions.
That's correct. Um, the council um action can include conditions that um the district would need to address um in the precise plan.
Yeah, I just want to clarify all that. And I think in 15 years down the road, because it takes a long time to build, I get what you need for entitlement. I'm just trying to cover all the bases here and made lots of notes. Let's see. The bleeding is now. So I heard someone mention, I don't know if any, the school district has even heard. Someone made a comment about, I don't even know, comment. Someone sent in, I think it was a public comment about the Mission Blue Butterfly. Has anybody heard anything about that? Kalima and Andy, probably not on.
So again, that's what the EIR report will let us know. So if we could, you know, these are the things that we're trying to figure out, like what actual indigenous plant life, animal life, insects, et cetera, are in the, are in the development. When the EIR report is complete, we'll get all that information.
Yeah, thank you.
We feel that once we get the proposal.
Yeah, got, got it. Thank you so much, Kalima and Andy, uh, for the Carmelisa. So in the monies that was figured on what the city would give was an estimate uh giving on uh like cost recovery? Like what it costs for the city versus the, what we're going to receive? Or is that down the right road as well?
Uh, from
For, for infrastructure and stuff.
Uh, we don't have the total cost for that yet. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if it's something that you'd, you'd like for us to uh pay more information on, we'd have to speak to our public works engineering uh department.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kalima. Thank you, Andy. Heartbreaking for the teachers and schools.
At this time, um, I would like to, oh, thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, I want to um throw it back to the ad hoc committee if you would like to report back on this um this issue. So Councilmember, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. All right, here we go. You ready? First of all, I want to advise the public, and I learned this through the meeting, that uh there will be another project administration building. And I learned this through the committee also, and I questioned it. Uh, another project at Westmore High School to build an administrative building with classrooms. And I asked the question, what funds will be coming from the Ceramante Del Rey project to pay for this uh administration building? I was told that no funds will uh come out of the Ceramante Del Rey project. And uh for those who don't know, this administrative project to create classrooms will not be under the purview of Daily City or Daily City Council. It'll be uh with the state only. So uh that's just an FYI. Secondly, in regards to the garden, and as you know this, I said the garden. Apparently uh we want to get matters straight. I heard earlier that the school started the garden. So the name is School Garden or the Community Garden. And I was not really chastised, so I'm just using the term the garden. For those of you who don't know, the garden started out at 13,000 square feet. Over the years, it has increased to 28,000 square feet. 28 to 30,000 square feet. That's a big garden. And if you look at the renditions, uh, the proposed renditions on the project at this time, uh, it includes a picture that's accessible, ADA compliant for an area encompassing 1,300 uh square feet. That's 1,300 square feet. I learned in the meeting that there's been concerns regarding the access hours of the garden. And the school district was supposed to work on limiting access, say from uh, as an example, 10:00 PM at night to 6:00 AM in the morning, access hours. The other was uh exposed, exposed, oh, erosion concerns. The garden's ever increasing in size and due to the recent rains, there may be a possibility for erosion on that hillside. So I think the school district is supposed to take steps to advise uh no more uh expanding the garden. And uh whether it's going to be in the, in, in the new plan to keep part of that garden, uh, it might be a possibility that uh to prevent erosion on the hill, you probably have to uh create some retaining walls. The other issue on the garden is accessibility. Yes, I've been to the garden and if you're in a wheelchair, there are some areas you cannot access. And subsequently, it can create a danger. Somebody could lose their footing based upon what area of the garden that they're at. The school district was uh concerned about that as well and was supposed to consider uh markings and to advise the public, you know, uh area unsafe. Okay, the square footage. Okay, so that's all I have on the garden at this time. So I talked about the Westmore admin building, uh, the garden. Any area of affordability, it was requested by my colleague that uh the school district should consider deeper affordability. And that means, you know, instead of 70 or 80% AMI, well, about 60 or even 50%. So uh the school district was supposed to consider that as well. I, uh, so that's a, uh, that's what happened on the meeting. I'm concerned about other issues that I've raised during the meeting, and that is the height. If you look at the rendition that has been provided to us, I've made mention about this before. Nowhere in that rendition do you see any high towers. Uh, it is true that the uh um council approved uh PD 31A to include buildings up to 150 feet. And uh I've done my homework. There is no area in Daily City at this time residential that is 15 stories in height, 15 stories. For the comparison. Uh, we also discussed at this meeting, um parcel A, which is the teacher housing. The affordability numbers is not to be included in the overall planned project because that was approved under measure J. So if you hear that you're going to get 10 or 12 units out of parcel number A, uh, that's not supposed to be part of the plan. The remaining parcels, B, C, D, The remaining parcels B, C, D, E, and F is supposed to, uh, uh, to include the real numbers that we're supposed to have affordability. Speaking of which, I learned that parcel B, which is the next building to be built, uh, adjacent to parcel number A along Cerro Monte Boulevard. Uh, it's requested that there is no affordability units in that building at all. At all. The reason I'm bringing this out because, uh, there are some conditions that I'm going to make, uh, uh, known to everyone here that if we were to move forward, that I would support this project to move forward under conditions. Uh, okay, and, uh, uh, that's it. Deeper affordability and, um, um, can, and, uh, issues for affordability. All right. In a nutshell, based upon what I've learned from this meeting and wanting to move this matter forward. Oh, by the way, when I ask about performer numbers, how much is going to be generated EIR? We cannot move, uh, they cannot get that information because they will have to go to a developer after we say yes. So, uh, we will be preventing them from moving forward, but we as a council can consider conditions, which is option number three that was presented to us tonight. Option number three saying, yes, we approve it, but under the following conditions. And here are the conditions that I came up with. Condition number one, we as council will decide on the maximum height limit for that area, height. Condition number two, you would like to see more of an equitable arrangement pertaining to the garden rather than one thousand three hundred square feet. Three, we would like to increase affordability for those units, uh, once a developer has, uh, come on board. Four, I would like to see more information as to a community outreach to the folks. I've heard the term NIMBYism tonight, not in my backyard. Well, this particular case, it's not NIMBYism because, uh, uh, I feel that we haven't received enough information from the folks in the area. Most of the calls I heard tonight is not in the area. They're from outside of Daly City. I would like to hear more from the community and the surrounding, uh, constituents who live in that area. And lastly, my last condition is I am totally against clustering. I am told that all of, uh, well, bulk of the affordable units is going to be placed in parcel C, a fourteen-story unit encompassing the Head Start, um, uh, facility. Well, why are you going to put all affordable and low income in one parcel? I think it should be spread amongst every single parcel that's built. If, if a two hundred unit is built, okay, you take a certain percentage of that and you dispersed the, uh, affordability within that building. And not just wait to say, well, under phase two or three, when we build parcel number C, then that's where we'll place all the affordable. I think that does not bode well with me. Um, so I'm looking forward to a performer. I would like to ask the school district, they presented some numbers tonight as to the comparison between the Sammentail Union High School District as opposed to J U S H D and the salaries. Uh, my question is, why is there a difference there? How are the salaries determined? Is it by enrollment? And, 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 and how is that determined? But they're using that as a means to, uh, satisfy building this project.
I can explain the difference if you have a second.
Well, I, I just wanted to put this out. I, uh, I put down, uh, many items. And, um, based upon council, I mean, there's a lot of questions, uh, Kalima, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, come across, uh, an answer. My last comment is, and I made this comment at the committee. Trustee Kalima Salahuddin, in, in the years that I've been dealing with her, not only on this issue, but on other issues as well. She has always kept her word and tries to accommodate, and Head Start was one of them. And, uh, there are, uh, others as well. Oh, and I forgot one part, gentrification. Well, gentrification usually applies to folks who are displaced residents. At the current site right now, the only ones being displaced is Head Start, but they're going to get a new facility. And the students, they aren't residences that are being displaced. So gentrification does not really apply. So that's all I have, uh, um, unless my colleague, um, um, Councilmember Manalo has anything extra that I may have left out. But that's my, um, report out for the committee. Thank you.
To, uh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Justin Manal.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, and, um, yeah, Councilmember Sylvester. I think there's, um, some items from our ad hoc committee that we did talk about. We did ask, uh, whether or not it was, um, feasible for the district to, um, work on the design of, ensuring that there's a possibility to have, um, a type of community garden where, um, they work with the community. And I think that's what we heard today, uh, that the district, you know, has, um, stated that this evening, uh, that they are willing to work with the community. Um, one, um, aspect also, um, that was in the Affordable Housing Committee was, um, talking about how the plan deviates from our ordinance. Um, and that the units are not being built simultaneously within the building, um, at ten percent. It's actually being built, um, in the second phase. And so I just wanted to mention, of course, there's value in building, um, at the same time, but also understanding that, uh, the district needs, um, resources for its teachers that, um, the standalone, um, affordable housing, um, is being built later. Um, but you know, what my question was, and I think that's why we've had multiple meetings with the district and staff is to see whether or not there is an opportunity to have deeper affordability uh, with a mix of lower AMI levels as well as, um, good faith efforts to reach twenty percent. Um, and I think, um, that it is so important for us to support our teachers and staff and faculty. Um, if this is, uh, something that, uh, we must do. I'm a proud alumni of Jefferson High School. And I'm very grateful to all the staff and teachers that have been there for me and that continue to be there for our students. Um, but there's also residents in our community, uh, those students and students' families um, that I would love to see be able to also live in this development. And so, um, and that's why, um, I, uh, would love to have a continued conversation and would love to hear from, uh, you know, J U H S D um, around, um, having th- this good faith efforts to, um, reach twenty percent and have a mix of lower AMI levels in regards to, um, the affordable housing piece.
You, Councilmember, um, Manalo, Vice Mayor Ray Brunetor. Oh, Ray, I think you're muted.
Got it. Sorry about that.
Talking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am in line with Councilmember Manalo's, uh, interest in twenty percent. Um, and the good faith, uh, effort, um, to do that. I guess my question to the, the Andy and Kalima, is that, uh, something that, um, you can state or, uh, would be, um, is that something that can be done? In, in other words, if we pass this, uh, by motion, is the good faith effort to get a twenty percent something that is an, an acceptable, uh, language, an acceptable, um, direction, an acceptable goal that we can move forward with?
Yes, we're happy to explore and work with staff, you know, in, in, in trying to reach that goal. As I've said, I am willing to do as much affordable housing as possible if it doesn't fiscally impact the revenue that we're going to bring in. And we can both walk away from this. This approval of this proposal is not of, of approval of a project. It's just helps us continue to keep talking. If through that continued talking, we don't reach the affordable housing numbers that you guys are comfortable with, you know, feel free to vote no against the project. But yeah, absolutely. I'm willing, as I said, I want to build as much affordable housing as possible. Though the thing I spend the second most about of my time is affordable housing outside of education. My fiscal responsibility right now is to J U H S D. So that always comes first for me, uh, because that's what I was elected to do. But at the same time, I am concerned about, you know, the eviction moratorium. I understand what it's like to not be able to find housing here. I struggled with that myself. I want to keep as much of our students and staff here as possible. And I know that takes a variety of housing, affordable and market rate. And we're looking to explore both of those options.
We're willing to work, and we're willing to work with you, the city, uh, to, to, to do this. We, we do need, we will need your help in order to make this happen.
Right, so we're, we're happy to move forward with that.
Okay, um, so, uh, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, so I was the one who actually, uh, moved to continue this item from October to today. Um, and I did so because I felt that, um, we needed to, uh, have further discussion, we needed to take our time, and we needed to, uh, really deliberate this matter as much as we can. And also, um, give, uh, the subcommittee, the ad, uh, committee an opportunity to meet again. And so, uh, I think we've done that. And, um, I think that we all collectively have our own ideas. But, uh, I, I think at least for me, um, and I think it was Mr. Saleem who said it about not getting in the way. I cannot see myself getting in the way of this project. It's not perfect. It doesn't have everything. It's not going to make everybody happy. But I think it falls back on what the true intention is and whether or not I have trust and confidence and believe in the mission, which is, uh, to support our teachers, ultimately to support our students, ultimately to support our community. And so, um, it has been a struggle, um, and rightly so. But I, I think this is something that we should all, uh, move forward with. And, um, I'm not really, uh, sure we should be putting a lot of conditions on, um, this project moving forward because I think we can, um, uh, you know, make the final determinations at our next, uh, stop when this comes before us and when it comes before planning. But about the only condition that I'm, um, really, uh, ex, uh, needing is the good faith effort to reach twenty percent. And so I would, uh, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, this preliminary plan with that, uh, twenty percent that, that Councilmember Manalo raised and that we make a good faith effort to get to that number of affordable housing. But again, so that's gonna, that's my motion, um.
Second, second.
I called for discussion. I had my hand up. You probably didn't see it.
I just seconded it and I think Mayor, um, thousand.
I was up before, even the, the, the motion.
I can second even if your hand is raised.
Mr. Mayor, I call for discussion before, my hand's been up prior to that, prior to the motion.
Um, I know there's a first and a second. Um, I guess we could just take these additional comments and then we'll just, um, see if we can go ahead with the vote.
Um, Rose?
We could, the mayor's indicated to take additional comments before the vote.
Yeah, before the vote.
Yes.
Yeah, before the vote. So I'm able to say something before the vote. Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to like, because you don't see this, the Zoom thing is crazy and, but it was up before Ray was even talking, so. So, uh, my thing is, it's, it's always known that Kalima and Andy always work things out and do the what's best usually always for the community. So, um, I just want to make sure that moving forward, because they're the ad hoc committee and that I know we're going to hopefully have all discussions with all the council at some point. And that no matter what it is on that project, I think that even whatever this, this decision is tonight, I know that you guys will probably be amenable, even if numbers change about the project or what have you. Um, I think that it's able to have an open discussion because we're a big community together and what was best for the community and the school and for the teachers and the students. And I know that, um, it's, it's not to let the public know that these people on this school board will, will work with the council. And they've always been, um, they are members of the community. And to let the public know out loud, um, there's a big history with all of us together. And, um, no matter what it is, we can discuss it. And maybe when you get someone that maybe you want something else on the, on the, on your design, and maybe they'll bring up an idea that might be something different next time, not different, but, you know, arrangement wise or what have you. But as long as things are open for discussion, then I think that, um, and moving forward that we can have that. I think that's important. And, um, I think that Councilmember, um, Sylvester has something. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Kalima. Thank you, Andy.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are so many moving parts to this. And I feel that, uh, council needs to protect itself uh, and state, uh, if something should come about later on and said, well, that was not one of the conditions. I am totally against just relying on an increase from ten percent to twenty percent. I'm also concerned about the height. I feel that the potential developer can come back to the table after sharpening their pencil and say, well, wait a minute, we can do this within certain height requirements. We have not heard that. So going along with this motion, you are excluding the height requirement and subsequently allowing three fourteen-story buildings to be built. The second, uh, issue on the conditions was clustering. I am totally against placing all low affordable housing units in one building. I don't want the stigmatism to come about and say, oh, well, that's the low-income building. And, uh, incidentally, that building is supposed to house the Head Start unit. So are we saying here that the building, which is all low income and the different phases, there will be no affordability in any of the, well, I, I, I can't really say that because I know in parcel B, there will be no affordability as planned. However, uh, the rest of the parcels B, D, E, and F will not have, uh, well, they may have some affordability as well, but the majority of low-income affordability will be mostly in building C. of low-income affordability will be mostly in building C, which is going to be close to, I venture to say, 80 to 100 units. What message does that put out to the folks, including some folks who move into the area of Cerro Monte del Rey project? And say, well, you know, it'd be hard to identify what's your low-income affordability, because they're all supposed to be built the same. And the design stage is supposed to all look the same. However, it will get out, oh, that's the low affordability building. So I'm totally against clustering. And I think unless we put that down as a condition, that is what's going to happen. Thank you.
So Pressy Saludine and then Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Well, I just want to address that because I know we've talked about this in ad hoc committee. Councilmember Sylvester, and I would just ask you, you know, if this is approved, then we can continue to talk to visit some affordable housing buildings that have been built in the way we're proposing. I will, I'm going to strongly push back on the idea of the old vision of ghetto. And I understand what you're talking about. But I grew up in Hunter's Point projects. I understand the idea of a project. You know, I know the old San Francisco projects and what those used to look like. That is not what we're talking about now. That if we could go and visit one of the multiple affordable housing buildings that have been built in San Mateo County, and again, including the one that's, the two that are built here in Daly City that I know of. The owners or the residents of those units are proud to live there. They love the housing. It's beautifully built. You can't tell that it's affordable housing from the street. And sometimes people will talk about this is affordable housing, because that's how proud of it they are and they want to talk about it. And I think we need to reframe the way we think about affordable housing and that it has to be mixed in with market rate housing in order for it to be validated or to validate the residents. I do think that it is completely possible to build high-quality affordable housing. And one of the reasons why I know that is that's what we're doing right now for our staff in our workforce housing. So, you know, I do want to continue this conversation. As you said, that, you know, I'm somebody of my word. And again, with Mr. Sanchez from Hart, he's willing to go with us and walk you through a couple of the developments. So I say, I know what you've learned about in the past, but I would like to introduce you to affordable housing of the future before you make a judgment about what you don't want to see on the site. And then really quickly to talk to your, you know, education is funded by property tax values. So that's why there's this disproportionate gap in funding is because the value of the homes and one and other school districts are much higher than the value of the homes in Daly City. So unfortunately, California has continued to fund education by property values. And we suffer because of that. That's why there's the gap in funding.
I'm the Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak upon the affordable housing piece of it, you know. As a council member in Daly City, it is also my duty to ensure that housing is built. That includes opportunities for all. So when we talk about equity and inclusion, having more below-market rate units or more affordable housing on site is something important. And so to have the good faith efforts raised to 20%, I'd like to ask my colleague if we could do a friendly amendment to include your motion to have them also do good faith efforts to include a mix of lower AMI levels. You know, what was mentioned earlier today in Kalima, you talked about mid-pen housing on Mission Street. And so I think, you know, there is obviously a drive to ensure that our teachers and our staff remain and also get the support and resources they need. And I wholeheartedly support that. I mean, I am an alumni, but also as a city council member, you know, there is an opportunity here on this very large project, it is large, to see whether or not we can provide more opportunities within that site. And so if possible, to see also if there could be a mix of lower AMI levels within the affordable housing piece. But I will agree with you, Kalima, in regards to affordable housing that has been built nowadays. You know, I've seen it through mid-pen, bridge housing, versi housing, that you would not even know at all that those are affordable housing or below-market rate buildings. And I think that's how housing should be built. It should be built where there's not a stigmatism attached to it. And I'm hopeful that down the line, who is chosen as affordable housing developer will have that type of design for our community. So that's what I wanted to mention. Because I know, you know, this is about equity for our students and it's also about equity for our residents. So thank you.
I have the member Manalo. I know there's a motion on the floor. I want to take like one more comment. Councilmember Di Giovanni.
I'll just, and I think the mayor. I know that probably it won't be a majority spoken, but Kalima, would you be amenable also to, like, well, I know you're always amenable, like you and Andy about talking about things. Like if it comes down and they do the thing to like, look at the fact of not having those high towers. That's been a lot of discussion. Because as you know, I sit on the airport land use and that in San Bruno and South City, they were able to fit, they were able to fit housing for the amounts that you were speaking of in lower heights. It was a different design, and perhaps, I don't know if Andy or you have seen it yet, but it was, there were six stories at the airport land use that we approved for South City and San Bruno's projects. And would you at least be amenable to look at them and see if you can get what you want? I know you want the money. And then they were able to fit them in their designs to be able to get less than higher, because it will be probably coming to the SFO eventually anyway. And that's something that they looked at when it came in front of us. So, and they were only six stories at that time. And that was recently for San Bruno and South City. They were able to fit a lot of units in it.
I don't have any info on like airplane use and height.
Yeah.
You know, to talk to you about that at this time. So I don't really feel comfortable doing that because I have no information on it. What I am hoping is again, that through the EIR reports and all the other stuff that happens, we'll learn, I'll learn more about these different things. But right now, I would just like to focus on the information that I have and what I do know. I don't want to promise something that I can't deliver.
Yeah, yeah, but be open for discussion, right? And see what you're given in front of you to prove that 14 stories is way too high for that thing. It's just too high. You could fit as many units in a lower ability.
I don't know that. I mean, I think the way that the, I'm here to, for the proposal as planned with the heights. You know, I think that in order to fit all the different amenities that we're talking about, including the green space, I don't want to build out flatter. I want to be able to continue to have as much open space as possible. I don't want to take up more open space because we're building flat. So the towers that we're talking about, you know, again, the council has approved towers previously before us, you know, this is not anything new. And so we're hoping to continue having these discussions, but we're looking to do that with the 14-story buildings.
You, Vice Mayor, Buenaventura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the interest of moving this along, I would be willing to accept the friendly amendment by Councilmember Justin Manalo of the. Can you say it again, Ms. Manalo? The B, is it the BMR?
Yeah, with good faith efforts, as you mentioned, which was about the 20%, but also look at a mix of lower AMI levels.
All right, so that's the motion that I'm accepting the friendly amendment, and I think we need to vote and call the question.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. I guess before we go into that vote, I just want to kind of say my piece real quick. And it just feels, in my heart, I just feel so torn, just to be honest with everyone. The structure, the taxes, the history of Proposition 13 that has affected generations of students in California prevents us to have an equitable taxable structure to provide funding, equitable funding for each school district. And I think a caller or a speaker said earlier, like, there's no single project that can solve everything. And when we talk about these different contexts, we have to take into consideration everything. So I just want to go ahead and thank everybody that stayed online this long, all the speakers and all the community folks and our Board of Trustees. So I know there's a second, a first and a second, and with the friendly motion of 20% mixed income with good faith and lower AMI levels to adopt the resolution with those conditions, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yeah, voting aye and hope that we can discuss about the tower heights.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
And Sylvester, no.
Dr. Rod?
Yes. Okay, so motion passes. Thank you for everyone's contribution. It's a very difficult but fruitful conversation that we need to have as a community. And I think that every time we have tension and we have places where we can have conversations like this, there's also room and potential for growth. And that's the hope that we're trying to come together as council. So thank you. All right, so moving on to our next agenda item, use permit UPR-06-21-015101, the Tesla Supercharger at 1590 Bryant Street. And we have staff, Michael, if you can provide us with your presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Ms. Magwell, and members of the city council. This is a request by Tesla to construct a supercharger at the northwest corner of Bryant and Washington Streets. I have a presentation I'll load now. Can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
No.
You may have to share another screen. We only see a shot of your folders.
Okay. Can you see it now?
We can see it now. Thank you.
Thanks. Now, this is a use permit application for a Tesla Supercharger at 1590 Bryant Street. Again, the project's located at the northwest corner of Bryant Street and Washington Street. It's a 32-post electrical vehicle charging station. Yeah, it went to the planning commission in December. This is the location of the project, again, northwest corner of Washington and Bryant. Here's a site photo of the property. It's presently vacant. It's been previously used for a staging area for the construction of residential development projects nearby. These are pictures of some of the adjacent uses located to the south, which is on the top picture, to the west, to the north. There are basically some residential uses to the south, to the west is a church, and to the north is a veterinary hospital. And also, not pictured to the east is residential. And the proposed project is a 32-post electrical vehicle supercharger facility. Presently intended for use by Tesla, electric vehicles only. There's 32 spaces. Two spaces would be for accessible vehicles, a charging post for each of the spaces, electrical cabinets, transformer, parking lot, lighting, and landscaping. The facility would occupy the entire 0.35 acre property. And access to the site would be provided exclusively in Bryant Street. There are no structures associated with the proposal. It's basically a parking lot with charging posts. The facility would be operational 24 hours a day, 365 days per year. This is actually the site planned, not a site photo, but this is essentially the layout oriented to city council. This is Washington Street here. And this is Bryant Street here. And these are the access points to, but it's essentially parking lot with the electrical vehicle charging posts. Several of the council members, other council members may be familiar with these sorts of facilities. There's one on the roof of Cerro Monte Shopping Center parking garage. And there are other non-Tesla similar facilities around town. This is a rendering of the facility. Again, essentially a parking lot with the charging posts here. Vehicles pull up back in and are able to charge. This is how the facility would look, looking to the northwest from the intersection of Bryant and Washington Street. And here's a rendering looking north from Washington Street. Here's some of the transformer equipment on the left side. Use permit considerations have been traffic, adjacent uses, light and glare impacts, and the regional housing need allocation. There was a traffic analysis prepared for the project that was accepted by the city's engineering division that determined that the project would not have any significant traffic impacts. Tesla vehicles are, as part of their, the hardware and software built into the cars, basically directed to other sites. If the site was happened, happened to be full, vehicles would be directed to the next available charging station, which in this case is probably, believe, the Cerro Monte Shopping Center rooftop. So there shouldn't be any sort of waiting vehicles in the street at all. Adjacent uses, in terms of light and glare impacts, one of the kind of the neat things about this site and the way that it's been designed is that the lighting that is on the site goes off and on as the spaces are occupied by vehicles. So there's actually not any impact from light when the spaces are non-operational. That's during the night. And so that's kind of something that's worth noting. We were concerned about the glare that would, you know, possibly disturb adjacent residents. And lighting will be designed and spec'd to receive shields if it should become a problem. The issue with the regional housing need allocation is that this site is already presently zoned for a mixed-use building on which there were going to be apartments constructed. This was something that was, this is a project that was identified in our housing element. This was something that was, this is a project that was identified in our housing element. The city staff feels comfortable in recommending approval of the construction of the Tesla Supercharger in lieu of the housing, because the city council's approved and has allowed for construction that has commenced on several projects that are not in the, that are not in the housing site list. And so those projects made up for the loss of this project here. I believe it was 27 units that were approved, and we've by far added projects that exceed that number. So we should be okay, but it's something that we did want to make you aware of. There was a finding about it in the City Council findings. Should the council decide to approve this, projects exempt from CEQA, and the planning commission's recommended approval of the project. Representatives from Tesla, as well as city staff, are available to answer any of the council's comments.
You, Michael. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Michael, so isn't there a new Tesla place that just opened up in Colma?
I'm not aware of that. The Tesla people may have an answer to that, but I, there's a dealership. I don't know if it's a supercharger.
Oh, you're right. I think it's a dealership, correct? They opened up in Colma, yeah. Okay, and my question is, is that, is there any particular reason why it's just Teslas only and not available for other, they would not do other electric cars there?
It's primarily related to the hardware, what's used to plug Tesla into the system. That's not to say that in the future, there couldn't be some sort of a combination of different types of hardware that would allow non-Tesla vehicles to plug in. But currently, this is the proposal. I don't know if the Tesla people would like to elaborate on that, but the current proposal is that this would be part of the Tesla's supercharging network. And, yeah.
Michael, this is Tessa Sanchez from Tesla on the line. I'd be happy to expand on that if you would allow it, council member.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And good evening, everybody. So, so yes, at this time, the supercharger station will only serve Tesla vehicles because of the Tesla connector that we have. I will say, just for some additional context, that is always been our ambition to open the supercharger network to non-Tesla EVs. And really, by doing so, encourage for drivers to go electric. This really supports Tesla's mission, which is to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. We have announced plans to open up our network, but the timing is still TBA for North America. We started this effort last month. We opened 10 supercharger locations in the Netherlands up to non-Tesla drivers. And our goal is really to learn from this pilot in the Netherlands and to iterate quickly while continually to aggressively expand the network so we can eventually welcome both Tesla and non-Tesla drivers at every supercharger.
Okay, but would it be under the umbrella of Tesla at the whole time?
Correct, yes. The site would be owned and operated by Tesla.
Okay, so when you guys, because when you're hearing the news that Tesla moved or what have you, you're just doing these type of operations now in California, rather than the thing in Fremont did that move?
That's a good question, council member. We still have our Fremont facility, our factory there. We actually are expanding. We have plans to expand that Fremont facility by about 50%. We also have several business offer locations throughout the state of California. We have just moved our headquarters to Texas.
Okay, and then are you guys, not that it's a charging thing, so it's really not applicable for the, for the permit? I was just wondering if they, if they had anything with the unionized workers for any of this?
No, these are, these are just Tesla employees, not unionized.
Yeah, not yet, because Tesla hires non-union, right? Okay, thank you. I just want to thank you, and thank you for being online.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Michael. Just want to try to think equitable within our Daly City, because not everybody can drive a Tesla. But thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Do I have any other comments or questions from any of my colleagues? Councilmember Glenn Sylvester?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to advise the council and to advise you as well, Mayor, that I will have to recuse myself from the vote. I think it'll be a conflict of interest, as I own two Teslas, and I also have Tesla stock. So I won't be voting on this matter. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and I think I wanted to ask the representatives from Tesla. I think this is one of the only standalone Tesla sites like this that's not connected to a mall, right, in Northern California? If you can state whether or not that's the fact.
I can take that, council member. You're correct, in Northern California, this would be one of our first standalone sites. We do have other standalone sites in California and then across the US and around the world. Another one that's comparable in California would be our new Santa Monica site, which is a standalone site. And then we also, so that one's in an urban setting. We also have ones throughout California that are in more rural settings that are standalone.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think that it's important to have access to these electric vehicles, should have access to these superchargers. I know that this is definitely where we're headed and where we should be headed in regards to ensuring that we combat climate change in that regard. And so with that, I move to approve this item.
You have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ripentura. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester Epstein? No, recues, pardon me.
Recues, recues, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
You're welcome. Dr. Rod?
Aye. So motion passes. Moving on with our agenda, public appearances and oral communications. I'll hand this back over to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear a name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. We have two hands raised. Last called speaker TK. Call-in user three. You'll have two minutes. Please press star six on mute.
Yeah, so what do we want to talk about tonight? Let's see, legacies, I guess, huh? So legacies of the entire council here, and legacies of people sleeping, and people fucking the public community gardens up, and, you know, shit like that. Motherfucking racist on council, motherfucking racist mayor. Sylvester, I'm proud of you. You voted no against building this shit out tonight, so that's good for you. I'm glad, I'm proud of you. Also, everybody, I don't know where Malpe is, but Malpe is fucking hiding like a fucking coward as she is. We should have fucking recalled you fucking months ago when Mr. Allen died, so when he was murdered. But you're, you know, Mayor, you're a fucking little fucking pussy-ass motherfucker. Why don't you meet with the community? Why don't you meet with the public, huh? Why don't you, why don't you fucking man up, dude? You're a fucking wuss, man. Why don't you fucking come down? Meet with the community, wink and...
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have TK.
Hey, good evening, honorable councilmembers, Tatum King again, Daly City resident. Sorry to keep you up so late, I know, for a long night. I just asked you all to take a look at the streetlight situation. I know it's, it seems like it's recurring. Looking for like a long-term solution, and the lights that keep going out in various parts of the region. I know this has kind of been something that's kind of been, you know, kind of pending for a while. And I know you all fix it, and Public Works does outstanding work, but just like to kind of flag that for your, for your help and attention. So have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we have one additional hand that raised after last called speaker. Would you like to take it?
Yes, please.
Remy?
Hi, Remy Tan Pacifica. Thank you for staying late for all these important items. Just kind of point of order, I noticed on the Tesla item that there wasn't any public comment on that. So just like, you know, I encourage, you know, public charging. I mean, we need a lot more. I have an EV myself, a Nissan Leaf that doesn't have much range, so it is really important. But, you know, I questioned, you know, having a standalone start when we have tons of parking lots in Daly City, where Tesla or EV go, any of the companies can set up chargers. I thought it was kind of sad to see a, you know, housing site go for, for, you know, parking lot with EV chargers. But, you know, in the future, I guess, they could move that and build housing, which I hope, you know, will happen, you know, in the near future. This will only be a temporary type of thing. Okay, and the other thing that I'd like to mention is the Daly City Bart Station. It's always been kind of a problem in terms of crime. The bus station over there is really nasty, a lot of catalytic converter thefts in the parking garage. So I hope the city council will reach out to Bart, to try to improve that station, and maybe use some of the parking lots to, to build, you know, much-needed, you know, affordable housing and make that station a lot better, because it is, you know, a transfer point for, for different train lines and kind of a sore point. I mean, I always use the Colma Station, because I don't feel safe in Daly City. If you guys know. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, we also have a one additional hand.
You pick one more, good for them, we just, we'll end it at that.
Okay, keep on, you're our last speaker.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I had completely tuned out like the last five minutes. I don't know if these are just general public comments about, you know, just random issues, but actually, the City Council and the City Clerk, they were emailed a community survey that was going around that 4DC conducted. A majority of the people who responded to the survey were community members and youth, and I'm not sure if you guys actually read the comments when they're sent before 4:00 PM. A lot of people were stating why the garden is important to them and why they do not support this development, and a majority of our survey respondents are youth in the school district. It's still an ongoing survey. I can, we can keep you guys updated with our results, and the petition is almost at 4,000. We are anticipating it's going to reach its goal of 5,000. And I'm not sure if you guys have been also keeping up with the S of Chronicle, the S of Examiner. There are so many articles right now about the garden, about this development. It's getting a lot of traffic. So, I mean, if you guys are planning on passing this, just keep in mind, like, the youth, their voices are not being heard. There's going to be a school board meeting tomorrow where the youth want to bring up COVID protocols, because the school board is not addressing it in our schools. The same thing with sexual assault. I'm not sure if you guys have been keeping up with Westmore, but our youth have been organizing, and they have been completely ignored. We are just begging you guys to listen to them. I actually encourage them to come to these meetings. We already know, like, high school students, like, they have so much going on, and they get intimidated by talking to you guys, but they really want to be heard. So please, if you guys get the chance, please look at the email I had sent to the City Clerk's office with the survey responses. And like I said, when we get updated responses, I will forward them to you guys. We are actually planning a youth day at the garden, since someone had said not, youth don't go there or something of that nature, or we don't have knowledge of gardening. There is a community there, and I just want you guys to keep that in mind before the next vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Next thing is our council committee reports. Are there any other additional council committee reports from December 13 through January 10? I see none. City Council reports. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Or Mayor. Yeah, so in the city council report, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year is one thing, and to say to our law enforcement, on January the 9th, to all the law enforcement, is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day on that date. For our Daly City PD, it's not just that day, it's every day to all the law enforcement and to recognize retired SFPD council member as well, and to thank him and his family for their service in law enforcement. Secondly, being that this is a new year, I do hope that our council remembers, and we can all focus on the community needs and be respectful with one another as we move forward, because we have many community needs and focused on, and hope that we remember where we allocated our monies when we took those votes for our budget. And maybe we can rethink or retake those line items and remember that that $500,000 to $1 million can be used for community needs and for other things, as far as our employees going forward. We have a lot of bargaining contracts coming up. We're in the middle of COVID, and the streetlights. We have needs that have never been met in over 20 years. So please keep that in mind, and if there's any way to do that, I would be totally grateful. And just hope that everyone stays safe and well. And that's about it for the City Council report. And look forward to a better year of 2022, and wishing everybody well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Are there any other reports? Councilmember Justin Manalo?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a report. I was able to join you for the Holiday Frosty Fest event countdown for the holiday. And it was just amazing to have staff put that on with such enthusiasm and always really providing something for our youth and young people. And so just wanted to say that that was something really special that the staff puts on every year, and really great to see that they continue to do so with so much fervor. So, thank you. And then I think we did have our council committee reports. It was reported earlier on in regards to the JUHSD two-by-two, and then also the Affordable Housing Committee earlier. And I think that those are, the attachments are within the agenda. So thank you.
You, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Yes, the Frosty event was pretty frosty out there. It was pretty cold. Yeah, I just want to go ahead and reiterate the thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to go ahead and reiterate um the thank you. Thank the library and Park and Rec. Uh, for all the work and effort they did in terms of the production to all the inflatables. And to do all this stuff online and the video production. A lot of gratitude goes out to them. Okay, um, other city council reports. It looks like we. Do not have any, uh, any staff reports.
No staff reports at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, so we get to our last portion of our meeting, our. Adjournment, adjournment in memory. Um, I'll go, I'll go ahead and start with Pamela Digi Afani.
Thank you, um, Mayor. Appreciate it. First, I'd like to close in memory of someone that is really a great giant in our. Um, community and he actually attended OLPH and Jefferson High School. We all know him. Was John Madden. So I'd like to, for those that don't know a little history, sorry for my voice. John Madden, number 77 position was offensive tackle. He was born April the 10th, 1936. Austin, Minnesota. He passed December 28th, 2021 at the age of 85. While he was living in Pleasanton, California. As I mentioned, he also not only attended Jefferson OLPH. He went to Cal Poly and was drafted, 1958, round 21. And he was the, I believe he was the 244th pick. He first played with the Philadelphia Eagles. He was a offensive and or practice squad member only at that time. He became in a pro football Hall of Famer, John Earl Madden, April the 10th, 1986. The nine, uh, December 28th, 2021, was an American football coach and sports commentator in the National Football League NFL. He served as the head coach, as we know, of the Oakland Raiders. And after that, who led to eight playoff appearances, seven division titles. And I believe seven AFL AFC championship game appearances and the franchise's first Super Bowl title. Never having, losing a season. Madden holds the highest winning percentage among the NFL head coaches. Who coached 100 games. After his retirement from coaching, Madden was a color, a colorful commentator. For the NFL telecast from 1979 to 2009, which earned him 16 Sports Emmy Awards. Madden appeared on all four major American television networks, providing commentary for games broadcast CBS, Fox, ABC, NBC. He also lent his name and expertise, as we know, commentary to the Madden NFL video game series. Which is very popular even until this day. These are just some. His highlights. I would like to invite everybody to look at our documentary called Daly City. I think it's called American History, which was done by our current Assembly Member Pro Tem, uh, Kevin Mullin with Kingston Media and his partner Brian. And it was done in 2012 with our History Guild and I think it's available through our libraries. There's a great interview in there with him. And I do hope that we come up with something as a council to honor him and in our city. And I'm sure we can as a council to make sure that he has some kind of permanence here and recognition amongst us. So, um, thank you very much and I appreciate it. Make it rest in peace. Our own hometown boy.
I would also um, I share those same similar sentiments as well. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay.
I just want to, you know, um, honor um John Madden as well. He. I think for me, like Sundays were, I, my first football games I ever remembered watching as a kid was with um. John Madden and Pat Summerall and knowing that he coached the Raiders. Something that stood out was his giant personality and then the color of the uniform with the silver and black and. As a young kid, learning the art of football through his video games. Like I really didn't understand how to play football until. Um, I played Madden, the Madden uh football games when it was on Sega. Or Sega Master System and um also to include that um. There will be a John Madden memorial service at the Oakland Coliseum on February 15th as well. Um, sorry to, oh, council member Glenn Sylvester, would you like to add on? Cause I don't want to. I know council member Pamela Digi Vani had more adjournments in memory, so I don't want to. Council member Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, first of all, just come out and admit it. You're probably a Raider fan. That's why. I kind of read in between the lines. Uh, a, a couple of things I also know about Madden. Uh, he never gave up in uh knowing where he came from. And it's my understanding, he's the one who provided the uh lights at uh Jefferson High School. So that uh kids can play at night. And also, uh, I don't know, and I don't know if this is true. In that uh he was, had a fear of flying. So given everything that he's done in all the games. Uh, he'd be on the bus and he would not take the airplane. So just uh, I think wonderful uh memories. That uh we have of him. Thank you very much.
You, council member Glenn Sylvester, council member Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mayor. You know, um, it's definitely um along those same lines, I think. Uh, going to Jefferson High School, um, it was always a, a big pride to have. Um, John Madden um be a alumni there. And it was something that I know that many of. Uh, the folks that I went to high school with. Um, and when he did give back to um. Jefferson and with the nightlights, I mean, that was huge because we couldn't really have night games, right? And so that gave uh the opportunity to have night games right there at, at Jefferson. And so. Rest in peace and power.
Council member, um, Digi Vani, I know you have a more.
Just one more.
Okay.
It's uh condolences for the Alameda sheriffs. Um, it's really sad. They're recruit and I'm going to defer to, he was only 28 years old. Somebody deferred to council member Sylvester. Out of respect for law enforcement, but as we know, he was a young Asian man, um, only 28 years old. And uh, so I'd like to defer to council member and may he rest in peace as well. That's Mary Sylvester. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, council member Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council member Digi Afani. I'm going to uh read uh something. And I've obtained information regarding recruit deputy Van Newen. And a lot of it comes from his family. Alameda County Sheriff's Office Deputy Recruit David Van Newen was set to graduate from the police academy. Next month. David was shot and killed as he was on his way home from the academy. He was born in Vietnam. His family immigrated to the US and settled in San Francisco where he attended high school. For the past nine years, David was in the Army National Guard. David was the breadwinner for his parents' household where he also assisted with the care of his father. In the afternoon of January 4th, 2022, our family, friends and community was shaken to its core from a devastating turn of events. Our world as we knew it would never be the same. David Van New, New, Newian was ripped away from us far sooner. Than we expected or he deserved. David was someone who would step into a room and draw everyone's attention. Anyone blessed enough to have met him immediately would be drawn to his passion and love for his fellow man. He was instilled with a desire to serve his community and show what human kindness truly was. His selflessness and natural born leadership qualities is what led him to pursue service via the California National Guard. And later to the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. During his tenure at the National Guard, David was an exemplary serviceman. When the call went out, he was always the first to report for duty. From helping evacuate citizens during the wildfires to providing provisions and deter looting. David did everything in his power to make sure others were safe and secure and comfortable. Above all else, David was a human being. He was taken from the world way too soon before fulfilling the great potential. We all knew he had within him. He was a son, a friend, a brother. He was a leader, a mentor, and probably the silliest clown anyone could ever know. With David, there was never a dull moment or wasted minute. Even in his passing, he continues to spread laughter and unity. I know down deep that he wanted us to celebrate his life rather than mourn his death. While we harbor no ill intent towards the individuals or individual who caused this tragedy. We do hope that justice will be served and his body may finally rest easy. The senseless and random violence must stop. We hope David's passing will bring awareness. And progress to the situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have any additional uh adjournment memories? Council member Glenn Sylvester?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
In the 1950s and the 1960s, and those of us who were here, I know I was. Uh, it was a time of tumultuous civil unrest movement. And amidst all of that, a person. Rose out of that to provide something to us throughout his life. That uh, we should take to heart and to always remember. The person I'm referring to is Hollywood actor Sidney Poitier, who was born in 1927 in Miami, Florida. He was the youngest of seven children. Poitier joined the American Negro Theater, but was rejected by audiences. Contrary to what was expected of black actors at that time, and that's in the 50s and 60s. Portio's, Portier's tone deafness made him unable to sing. So he was determined to refine his acting skills and rid himself of his noticeable Bahamian accent. He spent the next six months dedicating themselves to achieving theatrical success. In 1961, Poitier starred in the film adaption of A Raisin in the Sun. For which he received the Golden Globe Award. In 1963, he starred in Lilies of the Field. For this role, he won the Academy Awards for Best Actor and became the first black male to win the award. One of my favorites, back in 1967, he was the most successful draw at the box office. The commercial peak of his career with three popular films, To Sir With Love. And in the heat of the night, and guess who's coming to dinner? And to Sir With Love, he portrays a teacher at a secondary school on the east end of London. The film deals with social and racial issues in the inner city school. And Guess Who's Coming to Dinner, he portrayed a man in a relationship with a white woman. The film revolves around her bringing him to meet her parents. The film was one of the rare films at the time to depict an interracial marriage in a positive light. As interracial marriages historically had been illegal in most states of the United States. It was still illegal in 17 states, mostly in the southern states, until June of 1967. In 2002, Poitier received the 2001 honorary Academy Award for his overall contribution to American cinema. Later in that ceremony, another actor that we all know, and he's still living, is Denzel Washington. He won the award for Best Actor for his performance in Training Day. However, becoming the second black actor to win the award in his victory speech. Washington saluted Poitier by saying, "I'll always be chasing you, Sidney. I'll always be following in your footsteps." And just a, a little note on history, with the death of, the death of Ernest Borgnine in 2012. Poitier became the oldest living recipient of the Academy Award for Best Actor. May Sidney Poitier rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You, council member Glenn Sylvester, um, I have a, a couple of adjournments in memory as my, as well. Um, I just want to give a rest in peace and adjourn in memory to um Bob Saget, who was 65. If, if folks did not know who he is, he was a beloved comedian. Um, a rare Hollywood talent could portray a wholesome father in prime time and still maintain his standup presence by exploring sometimes dark. And raunchy humor. He was most famous for his um role with um Full House. As the father and also the host to America's Funniest Home Videos. Um, which included the, you know, the TGIF of ABC lineup that I grew up watching. As a person that um, you know, as a transplant to the Bay Area, that was kind of like my first impressions of the Bay Area was through Full House. And when I first moved up here, it was one of the first um landmarks that I wanted to see where the, 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 the ladies, the pink lady. What is it called? Like, I think called the um. The, the houses um where they filmed the beginning part. Yeah, the pink ladies. And so I just want to um. Um, adjourn in his memory and also another legend, Betty White that passed away. So uh, Betty White was a beloved comic actor whose career spanned seven decades. Although she will be remembered by playing the naive Rose Lund in the hit comedy, The Golden Girls. Betty White has died at age 99, three weeks short of her 100th birthday. Was for seven decades and one of the best love performers on US television. A consummate professional. She won eight Emmy Awards, the first and last, separated by more than 60 years. She was also a pioneer in the 1950s as one of the first women producing television and 30 years later, the first female game show host. Dub, the um, a FMC. And um, I just remember um spending nights with my mom. Watching Golden Girls and her coming in as, as a comedy relief and those are shows that I will take in. As um pillars of my childhood. Um, I also want to close in memory for my friend's uh mother. Um, my friend is Rosario Makahilas and she is a um. Her mother is Nellie Santos Makilas. Uh, she lived a beautiful 63 years of life, growing up in. La Gayan, Pakistanan Philippines and living the last 34 years of her life in Daly City, Cal- California. She was a woman who loved many and who was loved by many whenever she went. Nellie's infectious laugh, beautiful smile and overall presence will be missed dearly. So on behalf of those that um, we adjourn in memory, I would offer a moment of silence. Thank you, um.
Yes, did we have one more at the bottom?
Oh, did I miss one? Oh, Gabrielle, my bad. Sorry about that. Oh yeah, we also want to um also adjourn in memory of Gabriel R. Monte Mayor. Um, who's Richard Monte Mayor, Daly City Police, Police Records Clerk, um, Father as well. Um, and with that, I would redo it and offer another uh memory of silence. All right, with that, I would like to close um the meeting and I'll get better at this. Thank you and we'll see you again.